Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December 6, 2017, meeting of Danville Boyle County Planning and Zoning Commission. We thank you for your presence, taking interest in the business of planning and zoning and support of the community. As tradition, we begin our meeting in prayer. If you bow with me, please. Our God and Father in heaven, we thank you for this day and all the blessings of it, the health you've given us, allow us to be up and about and live again another day in your grand and glorious earth. We thank thee for our health, happiness, well-being, our food, shelter, and clothing, this country we live in, this community we live in, the peace and safety we enjoy, the protection you've granted to us. We pray that you continue to bless us as you have and help us remember that all these blessings come from you. We pray for our servicemen and women who are serving at home and abroad, that you watch over and care for and protect them, let the conflicts be resolved and bring them back home to their loved ones as soon as possible. We pray for our president and leaders of all countries, that they would make decisions that would bring peace throughout the world, and we could live together as brothers and sisters and get along. We pray that the decisions we make here this day will be for the betterment of this community and all involved, that you would continue to watch over and care for us, guard, direct us in all things, forgive us when we fail you, Christ name we pray. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the meeting, November 1, 2017.
Just in case.
I make the motion, we approve.
Terry moves, we approve. Jeff seconds, question discussion on the motion to approve minutes. Hearing not all in favor? Vote unanimous. Item E, letters of credit. You want to speak to that, Jeffrey, or do we need to speak to that?
I'll do that.
I'm sorry, I skipped the financial report.
I'm sorry, apologize, trying to move too fast.
Item D, financial report, Mr. Craig Butler.
Yeah, we, last week, we met with the Budget Committee, and we went over the audit in detail, and you guys passed with flying colors. The audit was very clean. The records were in impeccable shape. We spent about an hour going over it. We pretty much hit it from beginning to end. I think, if I speak correctly, when I think the Budget Committee was satisfied with the audit report. I think the full commission has gotten the issued audit report. And basically, we just came to field questions. If you guys have any specific questions about items that were contained in the audit, or if you have any questions as far as the audit process in general. I didn't really want to go over the hour-long details that we spent in that meeting, because I figured the Budget Committee could report to you the details of what we discussed. But we're happy to really talk about anything that you may have, you know, upon your review of the audit report.
Questions, or Mr. Butler with regard to the audit? Terry, any comments you want to make?
You know, we probably spent the majority of our time having Craig explain to us the difference between, if you look at the two columns in the report, what's called the current fund, which is the way we look at our numbers, and the second column, which is a statement of activities, which is when you factor in the pension accrual liability that the state now requires every agency...
Yeah, that's one thing, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at that, but can I interrupt here, or is that okay?
No, please.
All entities that participate in the state pension plan now have to book their proportionate share of the unfunded liability. I know everybody's read a lot about the unfunded liabilities in the Kentucky pension plans, and they're enormous. And so every entity, if you are in the pension plan, you have to put your proportionate share on your audit report. So basically, the largest item in your financial statement now is that unfunded pension liability in the audit. And that was a rule that was passed about three or four years ago. So going forward, that number will just grow or decrease depending on what the legislature decides in funding the pension plans. And that's a number given to us. We don't determine that locally.
And that was probably the majority of our discussion, were other things we talked about, but that was occupying most of our discussion, we were stating that difference.
Anything else, questions, comments? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Jeff moves, we approve the audit report from Mr. Butler. Ben seconds, question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing not all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Butler, appreciate it.
I like you guys.
We like brevity, too. Now, item E, the letter of credit.
You should, appreciate that. You should have a revised agenda at your seats. The reason for that revision was this letter of credit. Initially, we didn't have any to call, release, or reduce, but we had a last-minute release that we needed to put on the agenda. And the reason the timing of that, the letter of credit timed out on the 12th, which is next week. City Public Works got their punch list items done just yesterday. The developer, you know, again, it was a perfect timing, really, to get this on the agenda, so we can get the release done, as opposed to having to renew a letter of credit for one week and then turn around and release it. So that item is a release letter of credit for Jeffrey Baird, Windermere Place, from Community Bank and Trust, in the amount of $9,950. And we would have to get your approval on that to release that letter of credit.
Do I need to remove myself?
Do you just need a motion to release that? I don't like the motion.
Susie moves, we approve the release of the letter of credit. Wendy seconds, question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing not all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. Item L, subdivision approvals. Speak to that, Stephen?
Yes, sir. Again, you guys should have everything at your seat. If there's any revisions or new handouts, I'll point those out. Everything went out in the packet a week ago. The first item that you have there is a plat revision. You can see it's "The Bypass Center" is the title of it. And interesting enough, this plat revision actually sets up a case later on, on the agenda, on the site plan approval. But this is some revisions to the plat that basically get this site ready for a construction project, again, that you guys are going to look at here in a few minutes. What we're doing is removing some unneeded easements, we're adding some others. There were some stated setbacks for the Highway Commercial Zoning District, which were larger than needed based on the zoning ordinance. And now that there's other highway commercial adjacent to the track, there's no longer some of these needed landscape buffer easements. So this plat cleans up several items, again, to get it ready for a specific site plan approval that's later on the agenda. Technical Review Commission reviewed this, saw this. There was no real major items that we had, and looks good to us. And again, I think Kendall's here. If you guys have any questions for the engineer surveyor, he's in the room if you guys want to hear anything from him.
I make a motion for approval.
Jeff moves, we approve.
I'll second.
Terry seconds, question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing not all in favor? Unanimous. Number two, Duane Kelly Brown, subdivision plat, 4.388 acres, 1170 Waterworks Road.
Thank you. This is the Brown Estates. Again, pretty straightforward plat revision here. We're consolidating two lots that you see on your plat. That would be Lot 6 and Lot A2. Those two lots, this, again, this is on Waterworks Road. Those two lots, when consolidated, would be 4.386 acres. Again, Technical Review Committee reviewed the plat. Had a few minor issues. Again, this is a surveyor we hadn't worked with a lot, gentlemen here local. Really, really minor issues related to the land use certificate. Those have been corrected. That plat's been turned back in. Again, we don't need the land use certificate actually on the plat. That's something we're doing a little different. He's already made all those corrections and turned those in. But again, as far as the plat goes, consolidating the two lots, everything was technically correct. And again, they're just taking two lots and consolidating them into one. And the surveyor's here, if you guys have any questions.
Susie moves, we approve.
Second.
Jeff seconds, question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing not all in favor? Vote unanimous. Item three, John and Jennifer Sullivan, 10.032 acres on 843 Quirt 2 on the road.
All right, Chairman, just pretty much laid out most of what's on this plat, too. Again, this is a fairly minor plat. We're cutting off Track C, you just heard acres, 10.032 acres, off the parent Sullivan Track, which would leave a remnant piece of 29.7 acres. Again, Mr. Stephen Carroll was the surveyor. He's here in the room. Again, we had a few little minor issues, technical review, just related to format of the plat, some lot lines running through some text, whatnot, just some housekeeping, really. And Mr. Carroll's addressed all those and turned in a revised plat for us. And again, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and he's here if you guys have any questions for him. And again, his plat pretty much identifies Lot C. There's a Track B that was created prior. You guys can see that's in the north of that track. That's not part of this plat. But again, the remnant Sullivan piece, again, would be 29.7 acres, and it wraps around the property.
Terry moves, we approve. And Jim seconds, question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing not all in favor? Vote unanimous. And number four, Paul Bodner, subdivision plat, 7.397 acres, Bonza Lane.
Thank you. This is another minor subdivision submitted by our good friend Nancy Estes, sitting here right beside me. I told Nancy, obviously, I think all these folks are here for this plat. I was just guessing. So she said she thought so, too. So, pretty straightforward plat, and we actually had to, we only had the big version of this, so we just split it. We had to double-side this on 11-by-17 paper, so part of the plat's on the backside. But really, again, straightforward plat, we're creating 7.397 acres. And you can see it clearly delineated on the document. Technical Review looked at the plat. Everything was spot-on for us. And Nancy's here, if you guys want to ask any questions or have any concerns. But again, the Technical Review Committee, which was Terry, Jim, and Dr. Boss, we were all there, and we looked at the plat, it looked good. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Jeff moves, we approve. Susie seconds, question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing not all in favor? Vote unanimous. Item G, Brian Little Properties, Buffalo Wings &amp; Rings, plat for approval of a site plan of tract of land containing 1.252 acres at 101 Commercial Commerce Street, Danville.
All righty. This is a, we're into our public hearing portion of the agenda. This is a site plan approval, as you guys know. And as I mentioned earlier, we just looked at a plat to clean up this lot. This lot now has a client, has a project, and you heard it's Buffalo Wings &amp; Rings. We've got someone from the Home Office in Cincinnati here with us that'll speak here in just a minute. But I'll just give you some of the technical issues on the site plan approval. Site plans, as you guys know, are submitted under Article 4 of the zoning ordinance. Technical Review did review this plat, or this site plan. And we talked about a few small issues, building orientation, offsets of the driveways with this project versus the one next door. A couple parking spaces here and there that we thought maybe were a little tricky to maneuver. And the applicant was very amenable to making those changes. And there was a revised landscape plan submitted since the Technical Review Committee met, and one of those parking space issues were addressed. Site plan review has a lot of things, as you guys know. I think 19 items that are submitted with site plan review. You guys just really look at one page. Drainage, utility stuff's all been worked out with the city, been approved. Again, landscape plans in, I looked that over, it looks good. Meets basically all the requirements under the zoning ordinance. And the one issue that's not, that you're not seeing is signage. So we talked with the applicant a little about signage, and the way we handle signage is it could come in on the site plan review and show location, but you still have to get a separate sign permit down the road for a freestanding sign. So applicants probably, if they do a freestanding sign, are going to submit that sign permit later, and will look at that sign. But initially, with the build of the building, there's going to be several wall signs, or a few wall signs that identify their corporate product, that will come in at the zoning permit level, too. So the applicant, after site plan approval, gets a zoning permit for the construction, for the building, and a signed permit later, and they can package it either way. But in general, you're looking at a 5,950 square foot building on 1.25 acres. The building orientation's to the north, so if you're looking at your site plan, that's pretty top of the page. The zoning ordinance requires one parking space for every 250 square foot of building. That would be 24 spaces. The applicant's showing 88 parking spaces, four of which are handicapped, so their parking far exceeds the requirement in the zoning ordinance. And again, we just had a small issues about some of the driveway offsets, not a whole lot we can do. Theirs were actually centered better on their lot than the property to the east. In a perfect world, we'd have those driveway entrances lined up. And again, some of this stacking space, or, you know, setback from the intersection since we have a frontage road, I think in the future, those are things we may want to look at when we have multiple projects on a frontage road. But as far as this project goes, it pretty much meets all our requirements, and they were limited on their access and frontage and circulation with trucks because of the kind of odd shape of the frontage road in relationship to the bypass. So the lot's not really, it's square, but because of the other roads, it's kind of at an odd angle as we come in off that main road. So again, the applicant gave us some good guidance on that. We had a good discussion at Technical Review, and everything was addressed, meets all our requirements. And gentleman's here, from Buffalo Wings &amp; Rings, and he may want to just tell you a little bit about what they're doing. They're going to be a new restaurant here in the community, and he gave us some facts of technical review I think were pretty interesting. So I'll maybe turn it over to him for a minute, if you guys can ask me or him any questions.
Please. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Tom Davis. I'm Director of Construction with Buffalo Wings &amp; Rings. We are a franchise restaurant company out of Cincinnati, Ohio. The franchisee that will be handling this location actually owns, this will be his third location, has one in Barstown and E-Town. We strive to be the number-one family sports restaurant in the nation, and that's what we're striving for. We love coming into small communities like this and being a part of it. We love families coming in, in groups, ball teams, football teams, everything. And that's what we're about. So we're looking to be a part of this community. Any questions, I'll be delighted to answer, anything you have.
How many jobs do you think you'll create with this?
We will probably average out about 70 jobs. Probably start with about 100 or so to open with, but we do down to about 70.
Kendall, anything you need to add?
No, I just came to introduce Tom and let you know that, you know, if you have any questions about the site plan, the plac, kind of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion for approval.
Jeff moves, we approve. And Wendy seconds, question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing not all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Danville. Number two, Boyle County Industrial Foundation, applied for a zone change tract of land containing 142.318 acres located 4300 Lebanon Road, Highway 34, Danville.
I wasn't going to hide. I just made sure the lights got turned on. We're moving at a good clip. I guess we'll probably be done 10 minutes or so, so. You guys got a staff report in your packet for this case? This is a zone change application. I'm going to walk us through the staff report, or walk you guys and the folks here in the audience. It's on the screen. Obviously, we can't read the text from far away, but there's maps that are in the document, if this will work. And it doesn't appear to be working. So we'll get the IT guy out here in just a second. Is that... There we go, all right. So we'll go through the staff report, and I'll leave the zoning map up first. So I'm going to just walk us through the staff report, and you guys are welcome to ask me any questions. And the applicant's here, I think we've got neighbors here and other folks that maybe want to comment on this case. You see on page one of your staff report, we had an application filed on November 15, 2017. The applicant, contract vendor, property owner, in this case, are all one and the same, Boyle County Industrial Foundation. Location of the property is 4300 Lebanon Road. And you see the current zoning is AR1. And what you see up on the screen is a zoning map, and I got my pointer here, $3 Walmart pointer, so. So what we're looking at is actually is on this side of the property, right next to Bruce over there, 142 acres, does something like this. And just an interesting side note, this is a zoning map, and funny enough, we got an online zoning map that you can kind of point and click, you can put in an address and find a zoning, but you can't move side to side and see neighboring zonings, across-the-street zonings. So literally, I had to take three of the paper maps, lay them on the floor, take a picture with my phone, move it into a program, crop it, and put it up on the screen in that kind of goofy-looking fashion there. And I think I got it pieced pretty good. You can kind of see Lebanon Road, this is the industrial park, and again, all this area, and then the property we're looking at's over here. That's the zoning map, and unfortunately, you can't see the zoning labels very good, and that's something we're going to correct and talk about later under New Business, as we move forward and take our zoning map to the next level. But that's the zoning, so you guys, if you want to look at it, you have some of that in your packet. And the reason it's interesting is it does show the property is zoned AR1, the neighboring property's IBD, there's HC, there's some residential. So there's a lot of different things kind of happening in this as far as various zoning districts. Again, the property size is 142.31 acres, that's on page one of your staff report. Current zoning is AR1, or we know that it's agricultural. The existing land use, again, different from zoning, existing land use is what the land use pattern is on page one. It says the surrounding area is mainly comprised of agriculture and single-family residential uses, with several vacant tracts in the area. Wilderness Trail Distiller is located adjacent to the site, which, again, it's not showing up on this aerial because the aerials in the zoning map were done before the construction, but they're in this general location. And there are also several industrial uses, as well as a public institutional use in the general vicinity. Won't go through the rest of that on page one, but it's interesting to note on the bottom of page one, at the bottom left, the applicants have filed what's called a major changes request. And we'll go into that in a little bit, in a second or two, but we checked that box, and they've written a narrative, and we'll explain to you kind of how you guys review zone change requests, and the options under the state law, and one of those is a major change. So the applicant has made that request. We still maybe look at things a little differently, and I'll go through that in just a second. So again, page two of your staff report's here, and I'm going to read through it, but I'm going to go past it. That's a cleaner shot of the actual property, the way it's shaped, 142 acres. And I'm going to actually jump to the concept plan and leave that up for a few minutes. But I'm going to stay on page two of your staff report. Article 18 of the zoning ordinance outlines how zoning map amendments are to be filed, reviewed, advertised, et cetera. And then on the staff report, you see Article 18.10 specifically states the following in its guidance to the Planning Commission. It says, "As a condition to granting of any zoning change, the Planning Commission will require the submission of a conceptual development plan." And that's exactly what you see up on the screen. So the applicants have turned in what's called a concept plan, or conceptual development plan, and all those items are there, and they're in your packet. And some of the things I'll just point out, the access is up in this location, there's a presentation center, office, there's a, potentially a connection that would connect over to Wilderness next door. There's three rickhouses here, and now the applicants indicated Phase 1 is really just this, and a future phase is this, more rickhouses, and a distillery. So there's 17 total rickhouses that show on the plans of approximately 20,000 square foot, shows some landscape buffer depths. And again, Phase 1 turns out is going to be that section right there. So the applicant did submit a concept plan as required by the zoning ordinance. However, initially, when we reviewed the concept plan and talking with applicants, we thought it was important that the applicant actually state some conditions, most of which are based on that concept plan, some specific items that we thought were a concern as a staff, and those are numbered 1 through 5 on page 2 and 3. So the applicant actually, again, did not submit conditions, but through a discussion back and forth, they committed to these five items. So these would be in addition to the concept plan, and they go, they probably just drill down a tad bit more than what you see on the concept plan. Number 1 deals with access, and it says the property would be limited to a single street access point to Lebanon Road, KY 34. The location configuration of such access point shall be coordinated with and approved by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. A right-turn D cell lane shall be installed by the developer into the site along Lebanon Road within 12 months of final action. Specifications to be established by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. So what that means is, this is their proposed access point right here. They only have approximately 400-foot of frontage. If KDOT tells them they need to move it this way, or this way, or this way, the applicant understands they're going to have to do that. And if a right-hand D cell lane needs to be built into the site, and KDOT tells them that, they're committing to do that within 12 months. That's what number 1 says. Number 2 says property developed into two phases, and again, it's not shown on the concept plan, but we now know that's kind of a 42-acre track and 100-acre track, and this would be Phase 1, and this would be a future phase. Underground utilities, pre-standard stuff there. Turn to page 4. This was just the catch-all, really, for the staff. It says, "A property we develop in compliance with our subregs and zoning ordinance," and specifically looking at all these landscape parking, site lighting. Again, it's a good concept plan, but we don't drill down to kind of the nuts and bolts of a development. But as you guys know, we'll get a site plan if this is approved, and that's when we see all those things. It just commits that we'll see all those things with the submission of a site development plan, including site lining, signage, drainage, and on and on. 5 deals with the landscape buffer. They show 100-foot kind of buffer, what the staff was asking, that within a 20-foot landscape buffer, any existing trees that are 8 inches or greater in caliper would be maintained, and within that 20-foot buffer, again, we'd have a landscape buffer, and then what the applicants are actually showing is 100-foot, more kind of a building setback, or green space, or open, but as far as the hard landscaping, what we want is something that stays on that line. And again, we have some residential properties up here. It'd be important that we do kind of heavier landscaping up in this area, and that we've got more agriculture around there. And again, we preserve what we can and move in that direction. So that's the five conditions, and again, they're good, and we asked for them, and they committed to those. So before we kind of jump down to the bottom of page 3, let me jump into the kind of this major change issue. What the applicants have done is written a narrative on the bottom of page 3, which is what they describe as a major change description. And as you guys probably know, but it's worthy to go through it, the state law, when the Planning Commission's looking at the zone change, gives you guys very clear guidance on how you guys look at zone changes. The Planning Commission has to find that the zone changes in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is 172 pages and six maps. Well, more maps than that, actually, but six maps that we look at more than the others. And state law says you guys have to find that you're in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Then it specifically says, "In absence of those findings, you must find," and there's kind of two other options, an inappropriate zoning or a major changes argument. So the Planning Commission has options outside the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission has options inside the comprehensive plan. That is the map, but it's 172 pages of text. So the challenge for the Planning Commission is to sometimes use the map, and sometimes you use page 10. Sometimes, one, you feel the map's more important than page 10, and the other's back and forth. The applicant's saying, because we all recognize that we're not in compliance with the future land use map specifically, the applicant has written a narrative to say there has been a major change that's occurred in the community, and I'll let them explain. I'm not going to read their narrative, it's well-written, but they're saying there has been a major change, and we think that is a consideration for the Planning Commission that you should think about, knowing, and I'll just jump to the map, we won't dance around that. But clearly, the property that's being proposed to be developed is outside of the future land use map area. The future land use map that shows industrial stops right at that wilderness trace, and what they're proposing is kind of in here, which is shown as agriculture on our future land use map. Again, the future land use map is just one of several components the Planning Commission can consider in reviewing if this complies with the comprehensive plan. Clearly, it does not comply with the map. So the applicants, because the state law allows this, has submitted what's called a major changes... a major changes argument. And that is what's written on page three. Again, we'll let them talk about that in a minute. Later on the staff report, where it says findings of fact, I outlined exactly what KRS one hundred two, two-one-three states on how you guys are to make your finding, and it, it says, "You have to verify it's in compliance with the plan, and in absence of that, you've got other options." Those other options are open for debate, discussion, and then again, at some point, you may agree with the applicant, you may disagree. The map may be more important to some than others. And I put, I think, the kitchen sink approach into the staff report, which is anything I could find in one hundred and seventy-two pages related to this case, is in the staff report. And there's a lot of narrative that kind of goes both ways, and there's the map, and on and on. So with that, I'm gonna jump into the comprehensive plan review, and I swear, I'm gonna go through this as fast as I can, and then hit something at the end, a little, slow down a little bit. So on page four, we start the comprehensive plan review. And again, I went through all one hundred and seventy-two pages of the plan and pulled everything out, and that's what's in the staff report. And again, I won't, this is the full Bull County map that's in your packet. I'll, I'll leave it up, I'll, I'll go back to this one for the time being. But I'm just gonna run through these real quick. I'm not going to read everything through here. I'm just gonna point out what's in the comprehensive plan, and clearly, there are things that appear to contradict themselves a tad bit, and then we've got the map issue that, that we need to look at. So, right at the top of page four, I mentioned that in chapter one, where our goals and objectives, here they are, right there in front of you guys. But it's interesting to note in that first paragraph, it says, "Goals and objectives, they're intended to provide direct guidance to you guys when you guys make these decisions." And it should be noted, I just want to point this out, that article one, even though it's the goals and objectives, and these are the big things, there's no mention in the future land use map anywhere in the goals and objectives. You don't read anything about the future land use map and how it works and how it's to be used until you get to article nine. So I thought it was interesting, as, as goals and objectives were set for the community, the map was not set as a community-wide gold, goal. It's, it's, it's kind of alluded to indirectly, but there's no word that says future land use map anywhere in article one. What article one says is what you see. It's broken into categories. The first one's general land development, and there's a goal, and there's an objective. There's economic development, and there's goal, and there's objectives. Now, there are more objectives in the comprehensive plan than what I put in the staff report, but these are the ones that I clearly thought related to an industrial development proposal, and, and I stuck those in. I didn't put every objective if they were related to residential, for example. Bottom of page four, community facilities, goal and objective. Page five, transportation, a goal and objective. Lots of objectives, by the way. And then land use, which I think's an interesting one, because land use is about the map. And again, really not any verbiage about the future land use map in the goal or objective. And in fact, I personally was intrigued that the first bullet point was really to reference the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regs and enforcement, as opposed to clear guidance from the comprehensive plan. So under the land use goal and objectives, just kind of a note I put in my book, off to the future someday, we may want to just, you know, address our future land use map. That's probably the ideal place. You'd want to maybe put a bullet point about, "We have a map," and there it is. But I went through everything in, in that, and again, these are the only objectives I could find that were closely related to this case. So down at the bottom of page five, gets to, in my opinion, some of the good stuff. And this, we're in chapter nine of the comprehensive plan, so between articles, chapters one and nine, there's really nothing else in the comprehensive plan that relates to this case. It's more demographics, historic information. But article nine, or chapter nine, i- is where you guys get your direct guidance on how you're to review zoning map amendments and make decisions. And sure enough, right off the bat, there it is, future land use. And it's on the screen. So, I thought it was interesting, in chapter nine, there, there's what you normally would hope you'd see, and it says, "The purpose of the future land use section of this plan is to provide the planning commission with proper and detailed guide to make sound decisions." So that's right there on page five. So when the applicant, just stepping back a second, when the applicant submitted the case, said they're gonna do a zone change, Lebanon Road, one hundred and forty-two acres, first thing I do in my role is to grab the future land use map, and the first thing I did was like, "Oh, you know what? Oh, no. What's going on here?" Because, you know, when I figured out we were out here, and the map stopped there, I thought, "Ooh, that's not good if we're looking at the map." But, you know, in my experience, you look at the whole plan, and you look at lots of other things that I'm gonna point out here, but when you look at the map, we're clearly not in compliance. It's also interesting to note, see this dashed line? It's, it's on this page of your staff report, and then on the countywide map, kind of does this all around the county, actually goes out of the county. That's an urban service boundary, is defined on the comprehensive plan, future land use map, in that legend right there. So, I dug into that, and that's on the bottom of page six, and there it is, urban service boundary. Highlighted in the section here, it says, "The urban service boundary shown on the Bull County Future Land Use Map, figure nine point one, which is that, is designed to control spraw while permitting development in a controlled and efficient manner." So there it is. Urban service boundary, designed to commit, permit, or control spraw, but allow some development in a controlled manner. And it says, "Delineation of this urban service area is intended to restrict further development beyond it, and therefore minimize expensive extensions of public facilities," and on and on and on. Again, good verbiage. I'm kind of new to the community, so I understand what the word spraw is. It's a good buzzword. It's tough to really think you got spraw in a county of thirty thousand or ever achieve that without, you know, commuter times like big cities have. I understand why the urban service boundary was probably put on the map. Other counties have it, a lot of counties don't have it. But I think it's interesting to sort of step back, and again, as we talk about this, in, in my education and learning about a comprehensive plan, which this case was a perfect, perfect timing for me, the map became a little bit confusing to me, because when I look at the future land use, it's pretty clear. Everyone's used the map. We, we can see where, where we want to grow, where we intend to grow. But the urban service boundary then goes, you know, a third of the county goes around Perriville. Clearly, feels contradictory a tad bit to me that we have an urban service boundary here, but we have land use here, and if the goal was, and what the urban service boundary says, is, "We're gonna grow here, but we didn't put land use there." Normally, that's a one-for-one relationship, that your urban service boundary tends to hug your future land use, or maybe just go out so many feet where you want to grow. But clearly, what that boundary is, and the comprehensive plan confirms that, it's defined as an urban service boundary. What that really is, is a future sewer service area boundary. And then we have another section in this plan that talks about that. So that makes sense, and that, now I understand why it goes out of the county and it's so big, but it's clearly defined as an urban service boundary that kind of says, "We're not supposed to go past it." Well, if that's the case, it's surprising that we didn't do any land use, and if the goal's not to go past there, then someday, it should be scaled back or one direction. Again, I'm not making a recommendation on that, but the relationship of the future land use map and the urban service boundary and the comprehensive plan and all this text is really what you guys are going to have to use today to make this decision. This is what it says today, it's how it's defined. There's the boundary, there's the map. And we're outside the future land use map, and we're jumping outside the urban service boundary on a chunk of this. If you go back to the phase one idea, we're probably inside the urban service boundary, but when you do the one hundred and forty-two acres, we're clearly outside the urban service boundary. So there's, there's the verbiage on page six. I'll let you guys read it. Again, being, being a little bit of a novice to the book, tad bit confusing for me, but, but I understand it, and I actually wrote that right there, tad bit confusing in my notes, but I understand what we were doing. But, but page seven's good stuff. And when we look at our comprehensive plan, this is well-written, good stuff. And that's that location principles for urban land use. That's good stuff. I mean, that gives us real good guidance right there, and I'll read that paragraph. It says, "General principles relating to the location of urban land use provide a reference for the planning commission to promote orderly and systematic growth within Danville urban service area." Again, doesn't say urban service boundary, says urban service area, but that's not defined on that map, but it's defined in the book. And then it says Junction City, uh, Danville, Junction City, and Perriville. Principles to be utilized as guidelines for consideration of zone change requests are listed below. That's pretty straightforward to me, and there's all new development, there's a section on industrial, there's a section on Bull County, there's a section on industrial in Bull County, and clearly, there's language in there that gives some guidance that this project would meet those directives, even though it doesn't meet the map. And I look at that, and there's stuff under industrial about industrial parks, adjacent to existing industrial parks. Under industrial use, it references the John Hill Bailey Industrial Park, but then there's some other language that says a little bit different when you read some of those bullets. That's why you guys are the planning commission, and, and I'm, I'm just fortunate I don't have to vote, because there's a lot of stuff in here that you guys have to think about and weigh. And when we get to page eight, we spin right back around and talk about this urban service boundary and this urban, urban service area plan. Again, it's defined differently, and, and again, it's some clarity that we're gonna have to address in the future on the boundary versus the area plan, and what we really have, and how it relates to this map, and is that really an urban service boundary, or is that a future sewer service area? I, I think that's something we're gonna have to reconcile someday into the future. And then at the bottom of page eight, we've got the timing of development. It's good stuff, again. It said, "It should be emphasized that the urban service area boundary," and this time uses both words, area and boundary, "is to the maximum extent which urban services will be provided." So when I read that, it says like it's a point in time, and if urban services go further, naturally, you'd think that boundary would go further. So it, it almost says that this thing becomes more of a flexible boundary. So again, that's a serious question we're gonna have to look at down the road and talk about. Page eighty, ninety of your staff report, again, those bullets at the top say, "Prior to the approval of a proposed development, the planning commission should determine through a reference to the comprehensive plan and other relevant data the following." And I just highlighted, "The proposed development is located with safe, convenient access to streets, highways, and transportation facilities. Adequate sewer treatment facilities, stormwater, et cetera, are provided to the development time of occupancy," which this would. So, there it is. That's, that's all I could find in one hundred and seventy-two pages of the comprehensive plan, about five pages of verbiage here. The rest of page nine, the middle of the page, again, is just repeating what's really on page one, what they're asking for, agriculture to go to IBD or Industrial Business Development District, one hundred and forty-two acres. But I do want to point out these staff items of concern at the bottom of page nine. Again, tho- those are my, as the staff, item of concern, and again, some of these have been discussed with the applicant or the developer. These are just more for fill out the page and get the pages to be even, but, but no, we, we thought about this a tad bit, and I wanted to make sure these were in the staff report as items of concern, and you all give them whatever weight you would choose. And obviously, the first one that was an item of concern for me, for the developer, for some of you, are, is access to the property. So you can see, we have a commitment on access that was, we talked about earlier, but this goes a little further. And so this staff items of concern says, "Access to the proposed development. The staff has requested a right-hand D cell lane be installed by the developer into the side long Lebanon Road prior to occupancy." That was kind of a standoff point we had early on, is I said maybe prior to occupancy. The applicant said twelve months after final action. We said we can live with that. That's what they committed to. The timing of that's better for them, and it's, turns out, it's gonna be very similar anyhow. So that was one of the issues we asked for. And again, we, we both agreed that those specs would be done by K dot. That's their road, and they're the ones that would improve, approve the entrance permit into the site. Although additionally, the staff suggested that the applicant prepare access alternatives to the site, because clearly, we were getting feedback about access, and that road appears to be somewhat of a challenge. And it said, "If a D cell lane cannot be constructed due to the site distance limitations along the frontage, including exploring interparcial," you know, we just basically asked them, "Look at the entire frontage, look at interparcel connectivity with the neighbor, and give us alternatives or options." So we can look at this in, in a little kind of broader fashion, because clearly, where that driveway is being shown, we'll go backwards to the concept plan, is a challenge. And if anyone went out on the site and saw where that driveway is, and it's almost lined up right across from the house that's across the street, we got a hill and a curve, we got site distance challenges through here, and the road clearly changes as we leave the bypass and go for what appear to be ten-foot lanes or wider, and turn lanes to nine-foot lanes, a little narrow road, less shoulder, so as we start to move up the hill and come this way, the road just becomes more like a rural road. So access has obviously been a concern of the staff. It's a concern of the developer. It's a concern of some of you, it's a concern of some of the neighbors, I think, that we've heard from. So all we asked in that staff items of concern was that they think about alternatives, and that's what's on the concept plan, and maybe there's a better way we can talk about this because, because clearly, that, that's gonna be a challenge. And of course, we want to have a great site, and we want it to be safe. So enough on that. Second bullet, final site design is a concern for us. Again, we want to see all the big details, landscape, building heights, elevations, setbacks, and we won't know that till the site plan comes in, so that's later, but that's a concern. We want to, you know, this is a two-dimensional concept plan. At some point, we want to kind of see everything, the nuts and bolts, and we'll, we'd see that later if this was approved. Third bullet, there it is, compliance with the comprehensive plan, specifically the flume. Clearly, it's an item of concern, the map's not in compliance. And the map carries some weight, and it is part of the comprehensive plan. That, that really just gives that to you guys. It's a concern for me when the map's not in compliance, for whatever reason. There are, there is other ways to review this, obviously, as I mentioned, but that was a concern. And then, and then the determining site compliance, again, with the criteria that I just mentioned. All of that stuff in articles one and nine, I kind of summarized them in those five bullets. Again, lots of different language. It can be considered some for, some against. It could be, someone could say, "Hey, we meet the comprehensive plan because we meet number two or three, but we don't meet the map." That's why you guys make the decisions, because you gotta weigh all that evidence. So that, that kind of finishes that, and I'll just end with page ten is, is, there it is, KRS one hundred two-one-three, that's your findings. And this is right out of the statute, and I'll, we'll just read this. It says, "Before any map amendment is granted, the planning commission, or the legislative body in this case, or fiscal court," again, you know, there, there's other ways zone changes are approved, "must find that the map amendment is in agreement with adopted comprehensive plan." Doesn't say flume, it says comprehensive plan, which the flume is part of. "In the absence of such a finding, that one or more of the following apply." And there they are, A and B. A clearly is not on the table today, because that says the existing zoning classification is inappropriate and that the proposed is appropriate. Well, you could argue, "Well, we want to be industrial, but it's not inappropriate unless we mislabeled the map, a, a zoning district splits a parcel, maybe corner to corner. There's a use not consistent with zoning, you know, we got a duplex in an industrial zone, and it's non-conforming." You could make that argument, but when you have original zoning that's AR one, it's never been changed, and we wanted industrial, that's not inappropriate zoning. But there's, there's B, which the applicant is saying, "We'd like to provide evidence to the planning commission that we meet that item B. In the absence of finding that the comprehensive plan, this case can be approved under that. We think it can be approved under B, and this attorney's queued up, ready to go, and gonna explain that to you." And what it says is, "There have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area involved which were not anticipated by the adopted comprehensive plan and which have substantially altered the basic character of the area." That goes back to page two, and they wrote that long narrative. That narrative is to address that item B. So that, that's my complete staff report. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Bruce is back here. We got several folks in the audience I know that want to make comments, some for, some against. The applicant's here with their attorney. Again, I'll be glad to answer any questions of the planning commission, or if you want to wait to the end, or now, or hear the applicant, whatever, whatever your pleasure is. Sorry, it took so long.
Questions for Stephen?
Yeah, I guess I have a, the question I would have is on the de-acceleration lane. Why is that more important than having the road being three-lane right there so you can take care of traffic slowing down on either direction?
Yeah, three-lane road would be great, and I called Mr. Kelly Baker, District Engineer, Lexington, and, you know, we'd love to have three-lane road all the way out, but what typically you're gonna get is, as you see as you drive out that road, is probably project by project, you're gonna get at least a right-hand D cell lane that lets someone get off the road, turn into a site, and not have a car either have to stack or stop. But at this point, the state does not have that road widening on their six-year plan. It, it would take a while to get a three-lane road out to some point, but D cell lanes typically happen project by project, and as the state concurred, they love it when developers commit to them, because then the developer can put them in, and they'll, they'll lay out the spec. And as the state concurred, they love it when developers commit to them because then the developer can put them in and they'll lay out the spec. But at least in this case, you get a right-hand D cell lane so someone can pull off and get into the site, slow down, especially on a section of road that's fifty-five mile an hour. However, as you're alluding to, the problem really, and then his left-hand turns coming back out of the site, back to town on this specific location, which really neither roadway would really, really address as folks are coming down that hill and around that curve. In a perfect world, that access point is gonna have to meet the site distance for the state. And they told me that's four hundred and ninety-five feet, ten foot from the edge of pavement. Window driving height, whatever it is. Kendall's here. He can give you more details. But until they submit what's called an encroachment permit or access permit to the state, they'll tell them exactly what they want. But a D cell lane at least allows someone to sort of kind of pull over, turn into the site. And there are others as you drive down the road and as you drive around town. But to get a left-hand turn lane, obviously, there's not the volume that's gonna need to come from, you know, the south. But getting into the site, trucks, visitors, cars, you know, I think every industrial access down through there probably needs a D cell lane at a minimum.
Well, I guess as you head towards the bypass from this property, there are several access roads that go to other industries and go to the technical college. It seems at that point, the road does widen to three lanes and then it comes back down to two.
Sure.
And then it goes back to three.
Sure.
And then it comes back to two. That's just a wider, I mean, that doesn't, that couldn't apply up there without widening the whole roads, is what you're saying?
You could. It's KDOT's call and they'd have, and again, the site engineer can tell you what probably is gonna happen. The likelihood of us getting this done and tied into the time this development is probably not gonna occur. So you're looking at baby steps when you're dealing with access, turning radiuses to accommodate trucks, the actual, you know, width of the driveway, whether it be twenty-four foot or thirty foot or whatever we need. And then the D cell lane, just simply to, I think, do due diligence on any industrial site or big commercial site, you always want to have some kind of way to pull in. Unless you have a three, four, or five-lane road configuration, if it's a two-lane road, you always want a D cell lane into any kind of more urban site. And we do have some of those. Again, the challenge here is we got four hundred foot of frontage. We got some up and down road geometry. And again, it's their project. It's their site. They've got an engineer. We've just sort of locked it in. They're gonna have to do it KDOT. KDOT could come back, say nothing's gonna work here until we widen the road. It's unlikely, but they normally will grant some kind of entrance into most parcels. And then they try to do the best they can to get it designed to meet the site distance requirements. They won't alleviate those. So that'll be on the applicant. That gets back to, they may have to move this access north, south, downhill, uphill, something different than what you see on that concept plan. We just don't know that today. Yes, sir?
Yeah, in terms of planning for this particular aspect of the project, it has to bring in consideration with the other existing distillery that is within the industrial area because, I mean, in terms of these turning lanes and things like that, I mean, it's, if it's not coordinated between these two, the proximity to the two of them is, you know, like this. I mean, so I think it would have to be some sort of a joint venture that would create some sort of an internal area that would lead people to one or two, to either of these properties. I mean, because that would have sort of, I think, alleviate that part of it. I don't, you know, whenever we discuss the project, but just this part of the project as far as moving traffic. Because it is, you know, it is pretty, I go out there often. I like to drive in the country. And it can be challenging, just seeing cars and things, you know. And if you, the sooner you can move the cars off the road so that the normal, what if you want to call it, normal traffic is moving sort of at its regular pace, I mean, it would seem like it would be plausible.
Sure.
But if it's not, it doesn't seem like, it seems like it could be any kind of activity out there that was more than the normal, which I assume would be happening because there's a lot of things that are being planned for the other distillery I know of. And so there's gonna be projects that are gonna make this a bottleneck quite often, from what I can see or hear.
Sure.
So I think that it's gonna have to be some sort of a joint thing between neighbors, so to speak, neighboring businesses.
Yeah. So the one staff item of concern, I think we were kind of going in that direction. Probably not the specificity that you're describing, that we need alternatives possibly. And clearly on the site plan, you see there's a connection right here that shows a way to tie into maybe the neighboring property. So maybe the, you know, the big solution is another way that we do access, maybe another way that we come from the industrial park and come cross-country. The applicants today have submitted this concept plan. We kind of got let their engineer and those guys get up and tell you what they know. Again, I'm not an engineer. I'm a planner. Pays better, I think. So, no, it doesn't actually. I wouldn't want to be an engineer. And this is a perfect example. This is tricky. And it's gonna take some thought and again, some due diligence to really think about how this site would function. Maybe not the phase one as much, but when we get into this whole thing, there's a lot of stuff happening here. And that is not an ideal driver. We all agree to that, including the applicant. So I think they may be ready to give us some alternatives. I don't know. We've asked for that and there's obviously maybe some coordinated interconnectivity or another kind of rear frontage road or another way to get there. But clearly thirty-four is a challenge as it goes from an urban section to clearly to a rural section. And it needs to be addressed. The timing of that and the relationship of this development, that's really kind of your all's call again, as these conditions could evolve.
Stephen, this time, let's hear from the developer.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Then we'll follow up with other questions and certainly give anyone in the audience an opportunity to speak as well.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Winfield Frankel. I'm here on behalf of the Industrial Foundation. I'm not here on behalf of the developers. We actually own the plot of land that we're seeking to have changed from AR one to industrial. It's for a hundred and forty acres, as Mr. Hunter really set out in detail. And our position is really, it's twofold. As the commission's aware, map amendments are governed by KRS one hundred, two, thirteen, and that's contained in the staff reports. That statute dictates that the commission, in order to approve the map amendment, has to find that we're in compliance with the comp plan or, as Mr. Hunter said, that one of the two exceptions to compliance with the comp plan exists, either inappropriately classified or there's been major physical, economic, or social changes. Now, it's our position today that we're actually in compliance with the comp plan. I think if you look on page seven of the staff report, and it's contained in chapter nine, page thirteen of the comprehensive plan, if you look at those industrial bullet points, those are considerations that the commission needs to look at before or whenever you're all deciding compliance with the comp plan. The first one is industry should be located within industrial parks and/or adjacent to an existing industry to form industrial clusters. As you all saw on the future land use map, we're not zoned industrial right now, obviously, but we're right next to the industrial park. It's owned by the Industrial Foundation. It's a natural extension, organic extension of the John Hill Bailey Park. Two, you've got to find that we've got good access to highways and, when required, rail facilities. Rail facilities aren't really necessary here, but we feel that we do have access to the highway through thirty-four on Lebanon Road. And then there's actually another option back toward, back off of Corporate Drive that's been dealt with in another subdivision plan. Three, water, electricity, and gas and sewer facilities. Now, where the urban service boundary line kind of bisects our tract. If you look up at the diagram on the big board, it kind of cuts right past that second distillery structure on the back end of the plant or the plot. But the city's already annexed this piece of land and there's been an agreement to extend water and sewer services. Number four is industrial areas should be separated from other areas by buffers. Our plat shows an actual, on the first phase, the plan that cuts right back behind that, those first three rick houses, is a twenty-foot buffer line. That's gonna have trees. We'll landscape it. Make sure that it's a pretty clear-cut barrier between this plat and the neighboring properties. So we believe that we're in compliance with the comprehensive plan and that the other findings aren't really necessary. However, we're ready to address those, namely the major economic changes in the area. Now, Jody Lassiter put forth a pretty good narrative that's contained in the staff report about Danville and our evolution from a dry county, dry city to having alcohol sales either by the drink and restaurants and packaged sales. That's coupled with the actual ongoing bourbon boom here in the state of Kentucky. And since two thousand and eight, the bourbon's contribution to the state's economy has increased from three billion dollars to eight and a half billion dollars. A hundred billion dollars of that increase has occurred in the last two years. So we're right now in the middle of a boom. You can go to liquor store or any liquor outfit and see that the bourbon choices have increased, prices have increased on them. We're in the midst of a boom. Between two thousand and fourteen and seventeen, the payroll from bourbon workers has increased from seven hundred and seven million to eight hundred million. The number of distilleries since two thousand and fourteen has increased from thirty-one to fifty-two in the state. Two thousand and sixteen tax assessment of value of barrels is two point four billion. That's up three hundred million from two thousand and fifteen and actually represents a hundred and thirty-five percent increase over the last decade. And there's ongoing projects all around Danville. You saw an article a few weeks back about Nelson County. It's got stolies and creating a bourbon theme park, for lack of a better word. There's actually a project in Washington County that I think, is it Michter's that's doing that? So all around us, counties are recognizing this boom and are really trying to jump on it and get these capital projects in place. And we've got one here. This is not just an arbitrary request that we have where we're saying, well, we'd like for a bourbon distillery to come or bourbon rick houses to come here. We've actually got one on the line. And we just want to make sure that Danville doesn't miss this opportunity that's presented itself. So that's really our economic change argument. Wilderness Trace Distilleries here today, they're supportive of the project. As I've kind of played around with some of my partners yesterday, Wilderness Trail seem to be the kind of pioneers in the community for distilleries, right? They're the first ones. They've done an amazing job. They've been great for the community. But after the pioneers, we need settlers. And this is, this is gonna be our settler. This is really gonna submit it, cement it, and we're excited about it. And I'd love to feel some questions from the commission. But that, we would just request that, one, I think we're in compliance with the comp plan. And two, if the commission, for whatever reason, says no, you all aren't, we think that there are significant economic changes happening that necessitate this change. Thank you.
Questions?
Mr. Ford?
According to the paper, where you said sewer and water had been extended to the site of the city, but according to the paper, the sewer isn't extended for five years. What do you intend to do the first five years with the sewer from the site?
Well, I think for the first five years, and Jody, you might be able to speak to this a little bit better, but it's just gonna be a construction project initially. Right now, you know, they haven't bought the property yet. It's a construction project. And Kendall, you might be able to speak to the sewer issue a little bit better than I can, so I'll yield the floor to Kendall.
Kendall Wise, Vantage Engineering.
Morning.
And the property is annexed or is in the process of being annexed. We know that the majority, at least half of the property is inside the urban service boundary. And the higher points on the property are located in the same sewer shed that existing sewers are located in. And the plan to provide public gravity sewer service to this property would be to extend a gravity sewer from Corporate Drive, the existing sewers there in the industrial park, to the top of the hill. That would get the sewer onto the property in the area where the proposed distillery is located. And as you probably know, the rick houses and warehouses don't require sewer service. The presentation center obviously would need restrooms and those types of things. As that happens, the sewage from that building would be pumped to the, to the gravity sewer at the top of the hill. So we would have gravity sewer, public gravity sewer on the property. Any of the property that's lower than that elevation, but on the same property would be able to pump, you know, via a private gravity sewer to the top of the hill and into the public sewer system. So that's the plan. And, you know, if the first phase involves building three rick houses, obviously, we don't need sewer service. But we do have an agreement with the city set up so that within X number of years, public sewer service would be extended. And obviously, if public sewer service is needed before then, we're gonna engage in that and have that public sewer brought to the property sooner. We've also met with the health department and talked about the option of having, let's say, for instance, if they needed a restroom for two employees in the one corner of one of these warehouses and with a restroom there, we have the option to put in a temporary holding tank until the public sewer got extended from Corporate Drive to the, onto the property. So the need for sewer isn't huge, at least until the distillery goes in. So I think we have all of those issues worked out. And the public water system is currently on the neighboring property. Wilderness Trace Distillery has city of Danville water, which is intended to be extended throughout the industrial park. And we have a plan to do that as well, so.
So the visitor center isn't in phase one, it wouldn't be there with the three rick houses?
They're wrong. That's all I can say.
So the, so the, visitor center is not in phase one and wouldn't be part of the three rick house development that's called phase one?
It could be. I know that the immediate need for this company is storage. And so, you know, following approval today, we're gonna be, I'm diving right into grading plans and things like that to prepare plans for, detailed plans for the rick houses. So we don't have a clear direction on how, what the presentation center is gonna be at this point. But we wanted to show you the full potential of what we thought it could be, which, you know, we've shown a large building that numerous people could gather at and it's just not well-defined at this point enough that I can even explain it to you. So we wanted to show you the potential for what it could be. But at this point, we don't have a clear plan for what that will be.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And just to kind of hit back on what he's, what Kendall was talking about. This is the concept plan. This is what it could be. This is not, this is what we're doing. You know, aside from the three rick houses, phase one, this is all what we envisioned, but none of it's, the distillery and visitor center aren't exactly, we don't have footers in the ground just yet.
What can you talk to in terms of job creation?
Initially, and I was talking to Mr. Lassiter about this earlier, initially, we're probably gonna see about five to ten new jobs come in. And these are, you know, career-oriented jobs, really kind of long-term employment skilled labor stuff. And, you know, once, depending on how much expansion actually occurs on the back end of the property, it's hard to really pinpoint how many new jobs are gonna be, are gonna result from this project. I mean, it could be as many as, I don't know, fifty? I don't know. It just depends. But the main thing that I think the commission ought to look at is the, is a capital improvement on an otherwise unused parcel of land that the Industrial Foundation has. Right now, you can drive out there. It's just, it's fields. You know, it's not doing anything. It's not really benefiting the city other than being held there or the county. But with this project, you're gonna see that area really come into its own and become something that the city can be proud of and the county can be proud of and that the citizens can be proud of.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't think we're opposed to open fields.
Sure.
But at the same time, I mean, I think what you're asking for is us to have faith in what will happen in the future, which, you know, something that we have to deal with as a commission. We have to think about it. And also the fact that, of the bourbon industry, which I agree with totally, the Bourbon Trail, which I travel a lot in my, in my business and I, I can't say how many times people have mentioned the Bourbon Trail to me or called me and said, hey, you gonna be around? I'm gonna be in this area because I'm gonna go on the Bourbon Trail. So, I mean, I'm only recounting my, you know, experiences. I'm not saying I, you know, support it one way or the other, but it's the truth. And also, we have a Danville graduate involved with the Bourbon Trail. And I think anything that we do in this area, if it's tastefully done and, and safe, the safety part of it, and doesn't disturb people's property and the way they operate their land and the way they feel as they live on that land. So, I mean, I think those are issues that we're gonna have to try to, I'm just bringing these up because I think we should talk about them. And at the same time, looking at the land use map, the, you know, the, the circle extends and the, some of the really positive issues that Steve brought up in the staff survey, there's a lot of other places that are green and continually will be green space. So as a commission, as a, you know, we have to consider those things. And this area, the purple area that's in the map, I kind of looked at it with my little, because I had a hard time the other day seeing it, but I couldn't blow it up. But I think- But I think we, you know, the land is, you know, the extension of that is really only, like I say, half the property is already in the area. So, what, what is, anybody who is going to use this land, no matter if it's a bourbon industry or an agriculture area, they're going to have to decide how that works anyway because the, the land, but you, as a, as a city and a community, we have to decide on if we want to be a greater part of an industrial boom and take a chance to, to, to develop something that would turn into something bigger. I imagine both of these concerns, the Wilderness Trace, which is doing a great job, and a new industry, would work together because they'd have to. They wouldn't have a choice, really. And that's a good thing. And being located on the side of the city that already has the John Hill Bailey and other, an education center, the, the college there, the little college, BCT, whatever, there's a lot of possibilities to increase the usage of that as a, as a, as a center to be used to, to have related events, let's just say, and educational types of events related to that industry and maybe other things, you know, that are related to our community as a whole when people actually get out there and, and spend some time there. So, I, I mean, I think we need to consider that. And, and also, once again, the, the owner's property that surround, surround this facility, these two facilities, actually. So, you know, as we grow, you, you have to change. But I'm not advocating one way or another. But I'm saying there has to be some changes, otherwise you stay the same. And in staying the same, Jody won't be happy. I mean, nobody will be happy. Because as, as we know, many of the industries, the larger industries, ATR and others have disappeared.
Well, exactly. And this is a way for...
You know, and I mean, that's, that's one thing, it's, like I say, it's a community and a, and a commission decision, and, and that's all I have to say about it.
Well, you're exactly, I mean, this is a chance for Danville to gain another production facility, something that, that creates a tangible benefit to the city and county. And that's why we're so excited about it.
An expansive one that has possibilities for a larger expansion than many industries which are term, I want to say terminal, but they're, they're single-site kinds of, but this is related to the whole industry, so it would be a very good chance to do something.
Absolutely. Jody?
Jody Glassiter with the Economic Development Partnership. In full answer to Mr. Manon's question, generally, craft distilleries have low job intensity. However, distilleries have high capital intensity, as this project will have. Three rickhouses containing 22,500 barrels apiece are projected in the first phase. More importantly, as those little barrels of bourbon are sleeping, they generate a huge amount of property taxes, which will be directed approximately 75% to the local school district. And this would be within the Boyle School District, since the school districts don't conform to city and county boundaries, per se. So, this is going to be a significant impact for property taxes. And so, tax base, along with capital investment and job creation, are the top three priorities for economic development and, and what we're targeting every day. In addition to this, the agricultural community is welcoming the opportunity. Shane and Pat have pretty much maxed out Caverndale Farms, and we're seeing the potential for land values in the agricultural area increasing, simply because of the demand for grain that this bourbon boom is fueling. So, we're going to see that benefit in Boyle County, and we've had great reception from the agricultural community because it's going to hit their back pockets.
One quick question. Is the, the items stored in these rickhouses, are they considered personal property for personal property tax? I know my trumpets are, and I have to pay a big bill every year for my trumpets. But is, in other words, since they're not, they're like cars?
They're subject to local and state property taxes.
That's, that's my, my in-laws' property, or that they get taxed on their cars every year? So, are these barrels going to be taxed every year?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's a good thing.
That, that is of huge value to the school districts, particularly in the legacy bourbon counties to the west of us.
Jeff, you had some questions?
Well, I, I'd like to ask two questions, I guess, based on observation and just curiosity and probably preempt something that's going to be asked in the future. I guess my first one would be, you know, why in the last 30 years, this land's been owned by the Industrial Foundation, had it not been submitted for future industrial use on the future land use map? I think that would certainly preempted where we are at this point in time.
Well, you're right. It is, I mean, it's, it is curious that it hasn't been, honestly, it was a, it's a, it's a parcel of land that there hasn't been a lot of expressed interest in up until this point. And that's what I was alluding to earlier, that we've got somebody right now that says, I want to use this 140-acre tract. This is where I want to be. Before this project has come across the Industrial Foundation's desk, there hasn't been a lot of expressed interest. So, whenever the flume was discussed earlier, I guess in the past year and then in prior years, it just, we never really saw the need to have this piece of land changed. They're, they're just wanting a need for it. But now that we've got this, or this entity that wants to use it, we want to change it because we've got, we've got a fish on the line, as I said earlier. And John, you might want to speak to this a little bit.
I'm John Albright. I'm with the chairman of the Industrial Foundation. And I guess the, the best answer we can come up with is we never really anticipated that this type of industry would want to locate in Boyle County. And so, it, it remained agricultural next to our industrial property as a future use. But again, we never had really anticipated that this type of use would, would appear until Wilderness Trail located. And then it's grown from then.
But did you see a benefit to keeping in agriculture as opposed to go ahead and proposing the current change? I mean, you're on one side or the other, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Everything was, you know, in, in the industrial park, what we changed was what we had a plan for on Stigall Drive. So, we had already, you know, kind of developed that and set a plan for that and got that approved. Just hadn't gotten to that. It was just future land use. And so, until we got further along and had a plan for that, we just left it as it was. We farm it and, or we have someone that farms it and we get income, you know, utilize that. And it's a, it's an agricultural buffer to our neighbors, too, that's important, so.
So, it is currently being farmed? Is that correct or not?
Has been, yes. And will continue to be until some people move in. Thank you.
Well, I guess my, my other, again, I think it's a preemptive question, but I'd be remiss not to ask, I think that there's obviously a vacant piece of property to the east of this property, to the east of Wilderness Trace. Why was that not a consideration? I'm assuming it's already in the land use map, it's already zoned?
Well, I think this piece of land, as a teacher in law school, all real estate's unique, right? One piece of land, it's only, you can only find that one piece of land. And I think this one just fits the, the buyer's need better than anywhere else in the industrial park. And Jody, again?
Jeffrey, as a residential developer, you know the customer's always right. And the customers indicated their interest in this property in adjacent to the current distillery rather than being within the industrial park proper. So, we're serving the client's requests.
Well, they're both adjacent, are they not?
This is actually, since it is not part of the developed part of the park, the price point is different, and that was a factor.
Anything else? You mentioned about the water, gas, sewer, and electricity. Will there be a cost to taxpayers for that? And if so, how much or...
I don't know if that's been determined yet by the city, but I mean, I'm sure there's going to be a, a cost for extending it. But I don't, I think, are we going to pay for that? Is the developer going to pay for that? Or is that going to be the city's?
To the boundary line.
Okay, to the boundary line. So, I mean, there will be a cost, just, I mean, it's a construction project. But I think that's all been factored in just as an infrastructure issue.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission?
Anybody else from the developer want to share anything, Jody, or whatever? Nothing else? Kendall?
Kendall?
Before we end, and I just think...
Well, we're not ending, but let you all finish. We're not ending.
Oh, the sightlines.
Yeah, we sure, I think we could.
It's been brought up and a point of concern.
Right. This one for, and this is, Mr. Wise has prepared a sightline to show, because it was being asked earlier, if you can just pass this around. That actually shows the sightlines for this property.
Can I keep on just able to remember?
The Department of Transportation for 55 mile an hour speed zones, which is where this property is located, is 495 feet. And you'll see, Mr. Wise went out and, and surveyed and took photographs of the best sightlines. I think one of them's 599 and the other one he took at 495, and it's still pretty clearly visible. At, at where our proposed entrance is, which is indicated by the arrow, the sightlines are, I think, entirely appropriate and well within KDOT's specifications.
So, we have, we, we've submitted to the state an application for a new entrance. And with, with the economy like it is, they're, they're backed up in terms of being able to respond to us. But, so I don't have comments from them today. I don't have approval from them today for an entrance. That was turned in about two weeks ago. But we know that they require 495 feet of, of sight distance. And so, I had the survey crew using the parameters that the state would use to evaluate it, go to the site and evaluate the sight distance as if you were sitting in a vehicle, looking at headlights coming at you in both directions. And, and to the west, which is, I think, probably the point of most concern, is how can you see to the west? We can see beyond the, the sight distance requirement of 495 feet to a distance of 599 feet. At 495 feet, you can see 100% of the, my surveyor's body in that picture. At, at 599 feet, you can see his legs up to two feet off the ground, beginning two feet off the ground, I should say. So, that's about where your headlights would be located, would be two feet off the ground. And so, at a distance of 499 feet, you can see an object that's two feet off of the ground coming at you, which would be headlights at night. And the, the significance of the 495 feet, it allows a vehicle traveling 55 miles per hour to respond, react, and stop if someone were pulling out that was stalled in the roadway or something like that. So, we looked at that. We looked at some other options. We, we evaluated what Allen Springs Cross Pike is. The sight distance at Allen Springs Cross Pike is not as good. The existing driveway that's on our property is not as good. So, I would just ask, before you critic, are critical of this proposed entrance, did you get out of your vehicle and walk over to where the proposed entrance will be located? Or were you judging it based on what you know at Allen Springs Cross Pike or the existing gravel entrance at the site? And, I mean, all of these things will be reviewed by the state. And obviously, we'll have to comply with building an entrance that satisfies their requirements. But, and, and in addition to that, we, we're not, you know, our next step would be to create a plat that the, the developer would be able to purchase the property through. You're also going to be reviewing that. We're not going to create a lot that doesn't have an access point. And so, we've looked at some other options and, you know, a third option, I will say, that is sort of a foolproof option that will definitely work, regardless of what the state says, is to access this property from Corporate Drive along proposed streets that would be in the future development, the future industrial park. Right now, we have it laid out for a cul-de-sac street to be located in an undeveloped area on the west side of Corporate Drive with three properties to be created around that cul-de-sac. We could simply amend the preliminary subdivision plat to extend the street onto this property, providing public access that way. And so, I just wanted to let you know that all of these things are being considered. And obviously, we are working with the state to, to gain approval for this access. Yes, Vince? Vince was, had his hand...
What's the approximate distance from the Allen Springs Cross Pike to this entrance?
The distance from Allen Springs to this entrance?
Yeah, approximately.
Is...
Couldn't be more than 200 feet, maybe. Yes, sir, yeah. So, it's about 200, right? 300, maybe 100 yards?
Same.
Yeah.
Well, ballpark, you don't have to get to exact, it's going to be less than 495.
It's actually, if you, if you go to Allen Springs Cross Pike and you look back to the west, and you go to a point where you can see only two feet, or you can see all but two feet of a person's leg or be able to see headlights coming at you, it, it is right at our entrance location, so it's 409 feet. Vince, yes?
Yeah. It looks like, from my observation of this new map, that there's no right turn lane to get in Wilderness Trace. Is that correct?
Our, our initial application, which was submitted two weeks ago, didn't include a deceleration lane, a right turn lane, or a left turn lane. It is simply a, a 24-foot wide, two-lane entrance with 30-foot radiuses.
Well, my question is then to Wilderness Trace, I think they're out there. When, when you have any type of event out there, if, if, I've been out there a few times, it does present a problem. Okay, so, so, I mean, that's my only, it addresses what I was talking about before, that, that something has to be done between the two, considering also that Allen Springs is a, really, there's been a lot of accidents there. I mean, I, anybody who lives out there knows that. And so, so I think it's a bigger, it's not the client or the, the potential client and the, and the current Wilderness Trace people. I mean, I think there's an issue that would help their businesses very much if we could, we could fix this, too. I mean, it, it should be, I know it's not, we can't decide their proposal on that, but it seems like we'd be, if it didn't happen and we need to help the, the current distillery and, and, and fix that, as well as maybe make this one project, once again, as a joint venture between the two potential businesses here, one, one business and one potential business to, to fix this before. I mean, you have no access lanes and you have two businesses and still the same accident potential. I mean, more of a potential, and it makes people feel really, you know, hesitant. You want to encourage people to come to both of these places? I mean, I don't...
You know, the permitting process with the state, you know, part of that, it, it could end up evolving into something that requires us to plan how to reduce the speed limit, install caution lights, things like that could come into play. Like I said, we've just started the, you know, detailed planning of, of how this entrance is going to work.
It's just a concern. I mean, I, I mean, because once again, in planning and zoning, planning is part of what we talk about, I think. And so, any considerations for the property use, either an existing property that's operating business or one that is potentially going to operate, we need to protect not only the, our, our citizens, but also the people that frequent this area to use, to, to visit these businesses and to drive on our, our state roads. So, I think, you know, something that, because if it, if it develops some more than that, which I think it will, I, I think it'll grow tremendously. But at the same time, you know, you want to protect the, the citizens and, as well as the, the business of these people who are in, that have their businesses there, sorry.
Other questions? The commission? Anything else from y'all? Kendall?
I think Mr. Baker from Wilderness Trace would like to address some of those issues.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of, kind of follow on to the lead to the question. Definitely, it's been a con...
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Shane Baker with Wilderness Trail Distillery.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It has been a concern with Lebanon Road long before there was a distillery there. And we have done our best to obviously support a lot of things in the community, even by adding two additional improved roads into our property to try to get traffic off the road. And we're always a support of anything we can do there. One thing I wanted to kind of mention and definitely in our support of this project is you've seen an access road between Wilderness Trail Distillery and the proposed Phase One of this property. So, uniquely, when you look at Phase One of this property, there basically is inclusive of three additional rick houses, which are identical to the rick houses we are building on our property. So, uniquely, you know, barrels roll into those warehouses and they come from a distillery. So, you noticed Phase Two would be a distillery plant at that facility. So, Phase One, I wanted to kind of really kind of mention to the residents as well as to the committee here, is that during the Phase One process, which may be the five-year process, four-year process, every how many years that is, really, we wouldn't foresee any increased traffic at all compared to the current traffic that is... Oh! I was trying to keep the upbeat going, you know, adding a little bit of background music to my presentation. You know, all the other stuff's just talk. I'm trying to add some flair here. But really, and uniquely, over that first Phase One period, which it would take for those warehouses, three years or four years to basically fill those warehouses, all of that traffic would be through the interchange road of our distillery to that property. So, we would basically be filling that warehouse. So, there would be no immediate traffic hitting Lebanon Road. We would not get off our property, hit Lebanon Road to go up and make another hair burn turn. So, that's the reason for the access road between the properties. And again, for the short side of this project, there would be very limited traffic, if not not increased traffic versus what we're already seeing on our property. And again, that's the addition of the two improved roads that we have added to basically get grain trucks and different things like that off the highway in safer zones of that road, further close to that three-lane point as you come around the road. And then also, you know, and just in the bigger picture, there was a mention earlier about the impacts to the community. We got our first improved tax bill this year, so we can definitely attest there's a lot of taxes being done here. But it is. It's beyond taxes. It's beyond jobs. It's about highlighting our community and bringing people to our community. The Bourbon Trail had over a million visitors last year, and we are part of that. We're proud to say that we've seen about 60,000 visitors that came to Danville that would not have come to this community if it not been for our operation. And so, we look at this operation coming next to us as being another anchor, another opportunity to get more people to our community, more people staying in our hotels, more people eating in our businesses, and enjoying our town. Believe it or not, we've actually encountered people who have... Who come the Bourbon Trail every year and actually have relocated to our community because they fell in love with our community when they came here. So, as they retire or their kids come here, it's more of an exposure. It's more of a growth in our community beyond just business and industrial. But I did want to make a point about the... In the short term, not that much of a concern for the traffic on Lebanon Road beyond what there already is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of this requested zone change?
Just briefly, I'm Jennifer Kirchner. I'm with the Danville Boyle County Convention and Visitors Bureau. So, I feel I'd be remiss if I didn't absolutely, clearly state my support for this project. Last year, we saw over $90 million invested into our community in tourism, and we've only seen it grow. It's the third largest industry in the state of Kentucky. So, it's what the entire state is doing and not just with bourbon. We're seeing it all over the board with agritourism, heritage tourism. One of the reasons I struggle with development sometimes too and giving up green space and the way that I feel about this personally, not only from a tourism perspective, is that this is a really sustainable, smart development and use of that land. Distilleries very much capitalize on the natural beauty. You can go and see that at Wilderness Trail. They don't... There is an urban Bourbon Trail, but they are distinctly in agricultural areas. So, this is development that is agricultural friendly. It is a low-impact, environmentally-friendly industry. So, as far as development goes, I really think that this is a win-win for growth and for sustainable development. And we are also... I can speak briefly to that we are working... The Danville Boyle County Trails Alliance is working with the partners at the distillery, BCTC, UK Extension, the Boyle County Industrial Foundation, all the HR managers within the park to develop a trail, a separate shelled-use trail that is just beautiful, capitalizes on the beauty of the blue grass that would connect the distilleries and really make it a tourism destination. We have a mountain bike park we'll be constructing this spring over in that area as well. So, it makes sense for Boyle County's future going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor?
Please, age before beauty.
I'm Rob Caldwell and one of the neighbors. I'm representing my family and my four siblings who have a farm that is adjacent to this. And I do want to go on the record as saying that I think the best use for this land would be an arboretum with about four miles of multi-use path. That's it. If that isn't going to happen, then, you know, I think the best... The next best bet is what they have proposed because having grown up on a farm and one of the things that I enjoyed as I ride around Kentucky is seeing the old tobacco barns and the Dutch gambrel barns and whatnot. And those... We've got one we've got to take down on our farm that's just falling apart. But at any rate, you know, these rick houses are kind of the new tobacco barn in Kentucky when you get right down to it. And so... And it's going to be quiet over there. You know, there's just a lot of... You know, the... For us, as a neighbor to the industrial park, you know, light and noise is the issue. And, you know, these rick houses just don't make a lot of noise. And so... And there's not much light... There won't be much light once you get the shell on the building. I can see they've got the lights on the new rick house, which is great. It's been fun kind of watching that go up. But at any rate, I am here to support it because I think, in my mind, it's really good transitional zoning. And even though they're asking to zone it industrial, in my mind, it's quasi-agricultural in that they're going to... And because it is indo... And it's owned by... Excuse me. Because it is owned by the Industrial Foundation, you know, they could be wanting, you know, asking us to put in, you know, an aluminum smelting plant. And I probably would be up here with different feelings, but they're not. You know, they're asking for this to be, you know, a campus with rick houses. And I think that's great. And as a neighbor, I'm excited to see it go in. Yeah, I will say I will be promoting them to consider putting multi-use paths around on this property because, you know, I think as Jennifer has alluded to with tourism in the state, I think this is just... What they're proposing is just the tip of the iceberg of what this development could be. And I think you all brought up some good points today about ingress and egress. You know, getting the... Given the current state of finances in Frankfurt, getting the state to widen that road and make it really address lots of traffic is probably going to be a challenge. But, you know, at the entrance to Corporate Drive, there's great sight distance, great turn lanes, you know, it's fairly level land. And maybe once all this, you know, is zoned agricultural before something really gets finished, there should be a way to connect this property and Corporate Drive, you know, if they can't get the state to go on and put something new in. And I think that would also alleviate the issues that you deal with, with the barbecue festival and, you know, just giving them connectivity. And I know as a planning and zoning unit, you're always looking at, you know, trying to connect different developments so that there's more than one option. And so, I would just charge you with keeping that in mind if you do approve this, is to try to follow through on making it flow well through the development.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mike Paris. I'm the mayor of Danville, and I appreciate all the work that you all have committed to this project. I strongly feel that we are on the cusp of a real opportunity here. I think most of us that have grown up around here have long looked with envy at Bardstown. And I think we have an opportunity here to see further development in what I consider to be a very, very, very clean industry. Imagine, if you will, that Danville becomes a destination for bourbon tourism second only to Bardstown. That may sound like a leap to you, but it's not. As mayor, my central function is to position this community as best as possible for the future. Now, there's a balance in there. I recognize that. But I've said many times, and I will continue to say, that while we continue to solicit and actively court economic development of the traditional industrial type, that kind of endeavor, from a revenue standpoint of view, is much longer term. If a plant was announced today with the incentives we would have to give, it's about seven years before we would see any revenues to come into our city. This would provide a much shorter timeframe for revenues to come into the city. Additionally, there was a point brought up earlier that I don't want to overlook. Education. This is going to be a significant uptick for revenue for the county school system. A significant uptick. Go ask the folks in Nelson County, they'll tell you. So, the other part to this that I think is critical, Ms. Kirchner's already brought up, and that's the area of tourism. It's a well-known fact that the most efficient dollar that can be brought into a community is the tourism dollar because the tourism dollar reverberates through the community on average five times. Tourism dollars are clean dollars. Tourism dollars promote small business. So, as I look forward, the needs of the cities and the cost of operating the city are going to continue to increase. We can bear that burden either by bringing in good, clean businesses, or we can all reach in our own individual pockets a little bit more. I have a feeling I know where everybody might stand on that. I think all points have been made. Thanks for listening and appreciate it.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Hearing none, does anyone in the audience like to speak in opposition to this proposed zone change? Go over the mic, please. Introduce yourself, please, and address.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Kevin Faulner. My wife, Amy, and our three daughters live at 4450 Lebanon Road, and it's very close to the 142 acres we're talking about. So, we believe that rezoning for industrial purposes would be bad for us and other residents along Lebanon Road for a number of reasons, and some of those we've already talked about. A big one being the increased risk of accidents from industrial construction traffic on a two-lane, no-shoulder road that's already known for serious accidents. The additional light and noise that will move closer to our home and the yeasty smell that comes from industrial distilling operations. But another big concern for residents in the area is black mold. From our initial research, it appears that multiple class-action lawsuits have been filed by other Kentucky residents that live near distilleries in Shively, Kentucky, and near Frankfurt because of this fungus. If I could just read an excerpt from one of those articles that explains the problem. "The aging process is what gives it those distinctive charred oak and caramel flavors that we love, but it's also what causes whiskey fungus. When it's aging, expanding and contracting in and out of the barrels, oak panels, a significant portion of the alcohol evaporates into the air, about 2% every year. In Kentucky alone, that amounts to 5 million gallons' worth of evaporated bourbon per year. In the magical language that distillers use to talk about their products, this alcohol vapor is called angel's share because it legendarily floats up to alcoholic angels in the sky." What the... Where the evaporated alcohol actually goes, though, is another story, a more scientific one that explains why neighborhoods like Shively have had to deal with this black fungus for so many years. Since ethanol is denser than air, the evaporated angel's share doesn't float up into the sky at all, but rather down into the surrounding communities. It's the people's share. When this airborne ethanol meets the slightest bit of moisture, you get whiskey fungus all over the place. The whiskey fungus requires frequent cleaning and causes damage to the physical properties. Almost every resident in this article we spoke to has replaced their aluminum siding at some point in time. The major damage has been to people's property values. Even if people keep their houses impeccably clean, they're required by law to inform prospective home buyers about the boidonia. That's the name of the fungus, blight. Who would want to buy a house with hard-to-remove fungus growing all over it? Whiskey distillers can ameliorate that situation and stop more whiskey fungus from growing. They can install thermal oxidizers. These machines decompose ethanol vapor into smaller compounds like water and carbon dioxide that won't feed the whiskey fungus. In court, the whiskey distillers claim that this process will affect the taste of the whiskey, but brandy makers like E. &amp; J. Gallo publicly disagreed. I'll stop there. I do have some hyperlinks if you're willing to do some additional research on this significant air pollution issue. So, it may not be as clean as it initially appears. Quickly, some of those titles read, "Black fungal growth in distilleries." That's from an Ohio State University Extension article. "Kentucky's whiskey fungus problem is out of control." "Kentucky's fed up with a fungus, sue whiskey makers." That's from a New York Times article. "Trees at the Jack Daniel Distillery look blowtorched." From Business Insider article. "Kentucky residents sue distilleries over whiskey fungus." A Time Magazine article. I also have some pictures printed out that show this black fungus. Maybe I could just let you guys take a look at those if you'd like. So, in the spirit of brevity, I'd just like to respectfully submit that the proposed zoning map of Emmett is not consistent with the adopted goals and objectives of the general principles related to the location of urban land uses. I'm not sure that it still is the best use of the 142 acres, which is a pretty big chunk of the limited available land owned by the industrial park. And obviously, it doesn't appear to create a significant number of jobs, especially for the amount of land used. And so, I'll leave that to others to comment on. But regardless, I believe it definitely will not make Boyle County a better place to live for myself and for the 20 or so families and neighbors that live near me along Lebanon Road. It's maybe not in the right location to one of the other arguments. And so, it could be that it's a good thing. It definitely doesn't seem for us as residents who, when we moved there, it wasn't zoned that way. For that industrial to come closer to us at this point is a tough one. So, it will have an adverse impact on us, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Introduce yourself, please, in your address.
My name's Charlene Maddox, and I live right next door to where the visitor center proposal is. Totally in opposition, but I do think that we need to really consider the effect of our environment around the... And I agree with Mr. Faulner about the black mold, black fungus, whatever you want to call it. I don't think that's really been researched, and I do think that needs to be looked into. We have probably had 10 wrecks out there and four of them in our front yard. We've had four trees replaced, and there's always tractor and trailers that try to turn around there at Allen Springs Cross Pike and block traffic for quite some time. Recently, we had to get out because of an emergency for his mother, and we had to travel all the way around a different way to get out. There's no way there's drop-offs on both sides of the road. I would encourage you to definitely go out there if you haven't to check the safety issues. But being that they want the state to look at this and put in proper turn lanes and widen the road or whatever, you know, that's a plus in our book. But the black mold, I think, health reasons and... But the black mold, I think, health reasons, and looking at some of the things that we've looked at, we haven't had much time to research this, but, and I'm being a nurse, I think that that's a real consideration for health and economic because, some of the articles I read said that, once the waste from the distillery is into, I don't know about the water system, but into the sewer system, which we're all on, pretty much agricultural one on Septi tank out there, it will prohibit and hinder and possibly destroy plant growth and can just, and put a blight like on the trees. So, we definitely need to look into that because of where we are. We moved there, I can't say that it's been really noisy, I do hear them start up in the morning, but they've been good neighbors so far, so. But we do have real concerns about the safety and about the black fungus. And also, I do want to mention that we, my house shook, and we may have a couple cracks from the dynamiting where they put in the first three rickhouses, the ones closest to us. So, those are issues I think that the zoning board needs to look at before we talk about, you know, putting something in there. There's a lot of things we do agree with, we're not totally opposed to it, but we do think it needs a little bit more research in the areas of those safety concerns, economic and health issues.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
Yeah, my name is Michael Maddox, I live at 4330 Lebanon Road. I wish I had a red pointer like yours, I could show you where my property is, but that's okay. We might have a, we might be in a position where we might have a double jeopardy, and that would be the traffic, and as the whiskey mold that she was talking about. I don't think we're totally against it, or maybe opposed to it. I'm a capitalist, I believe in, you know, economic development. I have a company myself, that we sell, we have a national distribution all across the United States, so, you know, we're for tourism. But I'm not sure, I would like to ask, though, has the industrial board, or have you guys at all done any environmental impact statements concerning what has happened to other distilleries across the United States and over in Shively? I just ask that question. Can somebody give me an answer? Oh, I'm sorry. We'll put it right there. Can, can you give me an answer to that?
Well, I actually have, because we became aware of the residents' objections as far as the whiskey fungus goes, and it's true. Diageo, Americas Supply, and Brown Foreman were sued in Louisville and in Franklin County regarding whiskey fungus, but, and I actually looked over, I think, a letter that was sent around the neighborhood. The articles that were cited are all, I think, the latest ones from 2014, maybe 2015, but both of those lawsuits were actually dismissed in federal court and in Jefferson Circuit Court by agreement of the plaintiffs. Mr. Smith might be able to comment a little bit on that.
I ran out of mine.
Well, what that indicates is, the plaintiffs couldn't prove their case, they couldn't find a causal link between the distilleries and this fungus. And now, another thing that I want to point out, and I was talking with Wilderness Trail about this, they use the term "black mold," and that's kind of a buzzword, everybody hears "black mold," and you think, "Oh, my God, that's the toxic thing that's in people's basement and causes all sorts of lung afflictions." But the mold that was at issue in those lawsuits, and has been, or people want to link to distilleries, it's not, it's a mold that is black, but it's not the black mold. It's not this, it's not the toxic black mold. So, that's our position on it. One, the lawsuits that were filed were all dismissed by agreed order. Everybody just walked away from it, nobody could prove their, their case. And the black mold that was being researched was not the, was not the terrorizing black mold that's referenced in, in the news fairly regularly. Thank you.
Those lawsuits, probably, the plaintiffs probably didn't have enough money to continue on with that, but that's another story for another day. But I appreciate your time, and just want to, you ought to have that consideration. I would like to know, though, if we do have that, will the zoning and planning commission, or the industrial board, provide any funds set aside to clean our properties once that occurs? Can somebody answer that question?
Yeah, I can tell you planning and zoning doesn't have.
What about the, okay, there is somebody here from the industrial board, I believe, can they answer that question? Or have they left?
I'm still here.
Okay.
I don't know that I can answer that question, I think that's, it's a bold decision, I might say.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I could say I love to drive, I love to drive around the whole community and all of central Kentucky. I'm almost a Kentuckian now after 45 years. But, but at the same time, if the mold, if it's been proven to not be dangerous, okay, what's the difference between that mold? I don't know the answer to this. What's the difference between that mold and the mold I see on almost every block in Danville, on the sides of the houses, on the north side?
I think if you go into Shively, you'll see mold all over the homes, not just on the north side, which occurs naturally.
That's what I wanted to ask.
Yes. I think you go to Shively, you'll see, you'll see, you'll get your answer.
Excuse me, excuse me, you got to go over the mic, please.
And certainly, I'm not an expert, and I think the comments that were made are accurate in the fact that the black mold is not known to be a health hazard at this point. Articles I read said there's still some work that needs to be done to completely understand that. So that terminology is referring to a black-colored mold. But the research is clear from a study that was done by a guy in Canada in 2007, where they did a DNA analysis to confirm that the mold we're talking about is coming from ethanol from the distilleries, and so I don't think anybody's debating that. The other thing I would say is that not all of those class-action lawsuits have been dismissed. Some of them have, but there were a number of lawsuits, which just gives you a flavor of the fact that it's an issue, right? And whether it's been completely adjudicated in court or not, only, only point I'm trying to make is, it's a significant issue, and the distillery is not as clean as you, as you might think, especially for residents who live in that area. The other thing I would say in my Kentucky travels is, the areas that I go where there's a book-or-no over Jim Beam, those areas don't look to be thriving to me. They look to be sad and kind of depressed, and not a real nice place to live. That's my fear as a resident of Danville, is that we take advantage of the, maybe the immediate financial benefit, but ultimately, in the long term, it's not the right balance. It gets us a little out of balance. So, thank you.
This is Shane Baker again, Wilderness Trail. I just wanted to speak to some of the concerns. We received the same, same letter that was sent around. One, I wanted to kind of comment on the earlier lady's concern about sewer or grass dying. We're a zero-discharge facility, we do not put even any, even water down the sewer. So, nothing of our facility, or most of the distilleries today are zero-discharge. And also, we've never dynamited at our property, so I don't know what that, that was in relation to.
Dynamited the rickhouse, that was clear.
Oh, no, well, we've built all three of them, and we have never dynamited. But none to point, to the mold comment, and Dr. Heist, you know, Firm Solutions is the first business that we engaged here in Danville. We've been here for over 12 years. We have the world's largest repository of yeast and bacteria from alcohol productions in the world. And so, people come to us, and we've grown that business as foremost experts in this area. And so, definitely, I can relay any questions to Dr. Heist over there. But, but definitely, in terms of the concerns about the prior mold situations, which, which are factual, if you look at those situations, they're in concentrated, non-wind dispersed areas, such as if you go down to downtown Shively, it's like you're in Chicago. You're walking down the street, and there's just buildings all over you. Also, and back in those days, the codes allowed rickhouses to be built very close, if not next door, to residential or other buildings. Today, the current laws and codes require you to be 200 feet away from the nearest property, which is all of our facilities and any facilities that would be built. But furthermore, if you look at the mold, which is non-toxic, is not a health hazard, if you are in the immediate proximity, such as the door or a tree outside of our rickhouse, it is very likely that you could see this type of activity. We've had barrels being stored on that property since 2014. We have a historical home that is there, and we have had zero evidence of anything on our own property. Another thing that I'd like to comment on in terms of the mold, the particular fungi, it is ubiquitous to our environment. It is everywhere in the world. Distilleries do not cause it, distilleries do not produce it, they do not provide it to the environment. What, what happens is, in the presence of certain volatile compounds, that yeast or any organism can perpetuate. And so, that's what you see in close proximities to the warehouses in downtown Shively. My grandmother retired from Stitts or Weller, I'm very familiar with, with Shively, Shively. And, and again, if you go in that area, it is cascading of storage houses, distilleries. There's four main distilleries in that area, and there's close to, I believe, 700,000 barrels being stored in that particular area, not anywhere close to what we're talking about, as well as the proximity. And when we look at our prevailing winds, and anyone that lives on Lebanon Road, on, especially on the north side of Lebanon Road, you can attest, we are windy out there. As a matter of fact, on the driest days, when it says calm, we got 20 mile-an-hour winds at the distillery. So, nonetheless, that's one of the reasons we chose that property. Air circulation is what we're looking for in aging whiskey. And it's also an advantage to, I believe, all of our property owners west of us. Our prevailing winds are south-southeast, that's why we strategically place our rickhouses in those kind of directions. And so, anything, again, is being highly dispersed, and if it is being traveled further than the distances that we see, or our expertise tells us, that would be going in the northeast direction toward the industrial park. And, but beyond that, again, I kind of want to relay, there's, from our experience in the past, I'm also chairman of the Kentucky Distillers Association's Craft Committee, a board, and all its members, and so we've addressed these things for years. This particular topic has been in an open lawsuit for about eight years. It did recently get dismissed, actually, Monday of this week. So, as an organization and association we're a part of, we're highly aware of this, we're highly community-minded, we're always looking at, you know, what are things that can do. There was a mention about a Gallo Winery having a solution with the thermal oxidizer. Wine is basically aged in stainless steel tanks, as well as in barrels for long cellars, but totally different aging process than whiskey, whiskey, rather. And so, those solutions would not, as has been promoted in the prior discussions and option. So it's basically a natural environment. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Yes, ma'am, go over the mic, please. Introduce yourself and address.
Can you all hear me? My name is Frances Halloran, I live in Old Bridge, I'm 302 Briar Cliff Lane. I think this is an exciting proposition. My biggest concern is fire, with that one entrance in and out on a narrow road. And we do know that whiskey does burn, and we don't want to think that it would ever happen, but it could be very dangerous, and now we know where the prevailing winds are, that's something to consider. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bruce, anything you want to address at this time with regard to our proceedings and what we need to do at this point?
No, sir, if the, except, if the public hearing is being closed, and I guess it's appropriate this time for, I'm sure you should consider voting on that. At the point at which a motion is taken, as we made, I would, I would like to suggest to the...
To the motion maker, some additional reasons for their motion in support of their motion.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something before we wrap up?
Sure.
So, hearing all this debate, just had me sitting over there thinking to myself, and I'd be not doing my job if I didn't just point out an issue or two. Again, on my resume, it says I'm a planner, you know, so I maybe think differently than some folks. And again, just to sort of summarize it, your office challenge is unique, you got to find whether it's in compliance with the conference plan, all that stuff, we went through a lot of this other stuff, it's good stuff, it's evidence, but, you know, you guys got to follow the direction of the attorney, and is it in compliance with the plan or not. But I want to point out an issue that I think is still on my mind, and it is the access, and I wouldn't, again, wouldn't be doing my job if I just didn't think out loud about this, and it's, I got to think what I want to say. I feel it's a good project, too. I understand the map, and all these arguments are valid, but I, but when I drill down to the access point and what Kendall passed out, I'm still not comfortable with access point personally. And I think most of the people in this room, and the looks of your office faces, I think we're all concerned about that. And I went out on the site yesterday, and I look at the drawing, and I was in that gravel driveway. And if that's 495 feet, great, but when the cars were coming that way, I wasn't sure if I should go or not. I put the sign out personally, parked in this house across the road in the White House, and it's, it's sketchy out there, is best I can say. I'm new to the community, I pulled into Wilderness's driveway, and again, it's been pointed out, no D cell lane to their site, well, probably because it was already zoned, already flumed, didn't have to come in here and do a zone change. Zone changes allow the planning commission to require a concept plan, and sometimes you get tagged with conditions. So as I was sitting here thinking a minute, I was just thinking about how, how this happens in the real world, to alleviate what I feel are a concern, but still let a project go forward. And, and it does kind of go back to the developer, and I think what you typically see in communities are some things. Number one, planning commission adds some conditions. We've got five on the table, and one of them, I think, tries to address access in a flexible way to be determined later. But it is true, the state's not going to come out here and widen this road for us. A D cell lane may or may not work, as Kendall's pointing out, we don't know. The unknowns are still a bother to me, but the good news is this, we get to see a site plan down the road if this is approved. And in my opinion, most communities would have required a traffic study at some phase in situation. Now, this, you know, we're kind of dealing with two sides here. It's three rickhouses, it's small, it's only a few jobs, but then we heard 60,000 tourism. So, you know, a lot of towns, 500 trips, we do traffic studies. We do traffic studies with industrial zonings, or big commercial, or big boxes. Those provide answers to communities or to individuals, and we don't know, the state is going to tell us what we can do, but most times, developers submit a traffic study, and it says what we need to make this site function, and in this case, I guess it would study the tourism aspect and determine, hey, 60,000 job, or folks in and out of the site, those are issues need to be addressed. And if that traffic study said, thou shall build a three-lane road, four-lane road, 180-foot D cell lane, 190-foot, whatever, normally, in communities, the developer has to do that to move forward to the next step. Maybe the solution is a traffic study at the site plan approval. Maybe not. Those do cost money. Maybe it's the state coming here and giving us some guidance at the site plan. Maybe we can get that ironed out, but right now, that driveway and that location, it's not an answer. I don't think it's a basis of a denial, way, way I kind of feel and you guys are hearing, but clearly, it needs to be addressed, and we get a unique opportunity here that we get to come back and do a site plan approval. So maybe there's a way we can look at this later with the applicant, we can work together on what a solution could be. But, you know, again, looking at those pictures, 55, I don't know if everyone's driving 55 out there. Wilderness probably needs a D cell lane. I pulled in their driveway yesterday, and as I was leaving, an 18-wheeler was pulling out. Their turning radius is good on their drive, but that truck has to cut into the other lane to really make that turn, and it's slow-moving, and it's a problem out there. The best site distance is at the formal entrance of the industrial park. And in a perfect world, some back-reverse frontage road that gets us into these sites, clearly on big event days, I think is a benefit for the whole community. How it can be achieved, and what it would cost, and the timing of that, I don't know, but to sit here and think that that's the answer today, simply to get the project going, is not worth the one bad day we're going to have into the future here if something happens. And that is a bad spot. And in my 20 years, and you drive around the state on state roads, I can't think of one industrial project of 100 acres, I can't think of anywhere, that didn't have some kind of wider road, D cell lane, wider shoulder, striped shoulder, something, other than an 18-foot wide road with a 24-foot driveway and an industrial. I can't even think of one. Of course, I come from a flatter area, and we don't have to deal with these hills, but I can think of two residential developments that were on hills like this, where the developer had to cut, cut the hill down, or move the access up the hill, and get an easement across another piece of property. I think Kendall's on to something with these options, and I wish our concept plan wasn't that, but was more, let's say, a dashed line, 500 foot, with entrance to be determined by K dot. And it sure would be nice if there was a traffic study to back up some kind of... And it sure would be nice if there was a traffic study to back up some kind of hard evidence of what the solution would be, and if that comes, if that comes down to, the EDP's going to have to install them on behalf of the client, well, that's how developments occur. You've all seen that around town and other entrances. I think that's a reasonable way, that maybe this condition could be tied, little more meat on it for the site plan. And I think we've got some good conditions there, and that's just what I was thinking sitting here, looking at the concept plan after our review to drawing. I don't want to wait on the state to tell us yes, no, maybe, because we're approving today a zone change condition on that concept plan with that entrance right there. So maybe, you know, if we could all agree that that entrance is a floating entrance, or that we're not locked into that, that would be good. But, you know, again, the way our ordinance reads today, that that concept plan is a condition of this zone change request. So if down the road they want to tweak it all around, they got to come back. I would like to figure out a way we can approve this, if you all choose to, with that concept plan, truly as a concept plan, that we then could lock down at the site plan level when we come back, probably pretty soon. And it gives us time to work with the applicant on some solutions, and, because access is all I can think about right now. The rest of the project, I've actually, it's just amazing how many of the comments are going in the same direction, and so that's where I'm thinking, as your staff, working for you guys, where I'd like an opportunity to maybe work with the client. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Before you do that, at this point, I'd like this to declare, for the record, that the hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Just for matter of record.
Yes, Jeff, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I typically try to keep a zone change request and the eventual use of a zone change request separate, because I think they're two separate entities. However, with the obvious public interest in this change, that's ultimately impossible. Having said that, while I approve of economic development in the community, and ultimately this project, I would, I would like to make a motion for approval. I would like to see, as Director has mentioned, some, in the future, I'd like to see some access to the property, the site, included and within, and contiguous to the current industrial park and corporate drive. I think that, to me, would be a more applicable access. So, and again, in the interest of debate, and to further this process, move forward, I would make a motion for approval, and withhold, if there is a second, a discussion, for us to maybe take a break and get with our attorney on the facts and finding, and how we go forward on that.
Motion's been made to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'm...
We need to add some specifics to that motion, or I don't...
I'm prepared to discuss findings in support. If the commission wants to do more discussion, that's fine with me, but I'm prepared to offer you some findings in support of the motion, which I think are legally acceptable. I would suggest that you adopt verbatim from the staff report, the, Mr. Hunter's discussion of the goals on pages four and five of the staff report, under the headings, general land development, economic development, community facilities, transportation, and land use. And then the reasoning with, the reasoning, the overall reasoning would be that, as the applicant has submitted, that the zone change agrees with the conferency plan. Those goals support that contention. I would also suggest that you make a finding that the industry is a relatively clean, low intensive industrial use, and also make a finding that the whiskey mold issue has not been proven, as of this point, to be a health threat. Mr. Hunter, it mentioned some conditions regarding the entrance into the property and the traffic, and the traffic situation, and what will happen to Lebanon Road in the future. If those conditions are acceptable to the applicant, then I would like them to so state on the record, and those conditions may be imposed. You can't impose conditions unless you have some agreement by the applicant.
We have the motion, do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to give the share on that. Vince, seconds. Okay, now, question, discussion on the motion and the recommendations of facts and finding from our counselor. Would someone from the applicant address the request for conditions?
I think we would be okay with a condition stating that we'll comply with KDOT's Kentucky Department of Transportation's recommendations on the entrance, or widening the road, or a D cell lane, or anything like that. But I think that's probably, because they're the ones that are going to have the ultimate say on it, right? So I think they're the ones, I think if we agreed to the condition that we comply with their recommendations, hopefully that would put the commission's concerns at ease.
I think the question also, with the conditions, has to do with the access from corporate drive to this property, as opposed to access to Lebanon Road.
Is that, what would the condition be, that the corporate drive access is the only entrance to the 142-acre track? No?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, I think we're open to exploring that as a possibility, right, Jody?
The only concern would be, as I'm sure...
Here, Jody, you can come up here.
Because I'm sure Mr. Baker and Dr. Heist would reference the fact, you don't want to visit a distillery on the Kentucky Bourbon Trail by going through an industrial park. So we're trying to give them independent access on a beautiful Kentucky thoroughfare, and so we couldn't accept that condition, but we'll certainly accept what the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet proposes for improvements to the road.
What if, what, that's for the visitor center, and I could, but what about when you, you know, when you develop that other 100 acres for the other 14 rickhouses? I think it'd be nice to have some kind of a commitment at that point in time, that that would be access from another location. A corporate drive that is built wide enough for the trucks to get in and out, and to access that property without being on Lebanon Road, and I think that may alleviate a lot of people's concerns.
For truck access?
Yes.
Only?
Well, I think we're back to the original, that there's not going to be really any
truck access via Lebanon Road.
There will be, in the, when there's a distillery built, when the other 100 acres or whatever's developed.
That's where the alternative access from corporate drive would be appropriate for truck access.
I think it'd be nice to have a commitment at this point in time, that that will be addressed at that point in time.
And I'll commit to you, I'll propose it to the Industrial Foundation Board, because that's not my commitment to make.
Also, I think it's kind of a two-pronged thing. I mean, also, I think that Wilderness Trace needs to be in on the discussions, because their, their business is affected by that, their current residents of the same area, and they've been good...
Yes.
Business people for our community.
And we work closely with them.
Yeah, I know, but I just want to make sure that everybody realizes that that's really important, and to come up with a tourism entrance and a business entrance. So that would be my, I don't particularly care what, where they are, as long as they are good for safety, and they're good for the businesses themselves to get the product to and from their property. I mean, going through Lebanon Road is not going to be easy, even when they, even when they fix it, and we come up with a solution from the Department of Transportation.
I think that's perfectly acceptable, and we'll explore it.
So it's kind of a two, two things, and that would give actually more flexibility to the businesses, as well as to have a better solution, because it wouldn't be the same solution.
Many of our industries on corporate drive already have dedicated truck access versus employee access.
Right.
So since this is a unique industry, agribusiness and industry...
Right.
We would do the same relative to tourism, which, again, phase two may or may not ever occur, and we just have baby barrels aging. So we can't forecast what kind of visitor traffic, even though Jennifer and I certainly hope it arrives at that date. But from the standpoint of future access for trucks, corporate drive would be certainly appropriate.
But also...
And we could tie in with existing planned western access roads.
But that's our planning. Part of it. Can we show that? Would you be willing to show that on your development plans you have there?
Well, it's currently on our preliminary subdivision master plan, that you've approved a long time ago for John Hill Bailey Park, but we would show an interconnection. I think it's what you're asking for, Jeff?
Yes, to this property.
Yeah, right there.
I want to have this, would you want?
Sure.
That's been...
That would be my concept.
Kendall, just go to the mic and speak what you're sharing, if you would, for the record.
So, the document you're looking at is, the white space on the property, the white space on this master plan, those are, it needs to be updated a little bit with what's been done with Wilderness Trace Distillery recently, but for the most part, the white space property's still owned by the Industrial Foundation. The street that you see in red is, would be an alternate access street. The street that it connects to has not been built, that's a future street. There's, I mean, that master plan shows three, three lots being created and sold someday with that street being constructed, so that would, that's what, that's what it would look like, something similar to that.
CEO's saying the foundation would accept a motion where the access off Lebanon Road was for the visitor center only, and that the truck traffic would be off of some access provided via corporate drive?
Not for phase one, because... We don't know if phase two is going to materialize, and the only access of trucks will be for construction of the first three rickhouses. The actual product delivery will come not through Lebanon Road...
Mr. Baker...
But for phase two, we'll certainly undertake that.
Mr. Baker, you already said there's not going to be truck traffic on Lebanon Road, so why can't you agree to that? He said the truck traffic's going to be between their two properties.
And that extra little loop.
Because I can't forecast whether there's going to be a truck that needs to access the current road access at 4,300 Lebanon Road.
You just said it was no trucks going to be there.
Construction trucks versus product delivery trucks.
I think, I think you're, we're mixing words now, but, construction is something that...
I'm trying not to landlock 140 acres. So, product delivery will come via Wilderness Trail access, construction for phase one, the lower 29 acres will come via the Lebanon Road access, until we can...
Construction is finite.
Correct. Which, we can't build a road for a finite construction process in the rear of the park...
I don't think anyone's asking that, in all due respect. I think it's very clear that the concern is, you're showing us a plat that has 14 rickhouses on it.
It's a conceptual design plan.
Okay. Conceptually, what we're proposing is with, that there be an access to the, to the rest of that concept, that there'd be a commitment, that it won't be through this first 42 acres, which I think will alleviate most of the concerns people have about this zone change. That's all we're asking for.
I understand, I just don't think that I can tell our client that we're selling you the lower roughly 30-acre tract, and you cannot access it with a construction vehicle.
No one has said anything about construction, Jody. No one has said anything about construction in this whole debate, except you.
But you're talking about truck traffic generally?
We're talking about accessing a potential distillery...
Right.
That you have on your conceptual plan.
Right, in the rear 100 acres...
Exactly.
Not to be developed today.
But you brought it up there, so we're addressing it at this point in time.
Yes, sir.
It's part of, your conceptual plan is part of this zone change.
Correct.
Is it not?
Yes, and so when that distillery is planned, we would have that secondary access from corporate drive. Aren't we saying the same thing?
No, we're not.
Counselor?
Doesn't the road...
I'm, 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 I'm a little bit lost, and all due respect to the commission, on what, what this condition is. Are you all saying that we're not going to have, or we don't want to allow any, because there's going to be construction traffic out there, right? And I know...
Construction traffic has not been mentioned one time.
We've got to, I mean, the zone change, once we get the zone changed, if the commission decides to change the zone, there's going to be construction out there, right?
No one has said anything about construction traffic. That is not a concern that's been brought up by anyone in this room.
Then what, then all I'm asking for is a little bit of clarification on what, is your all's concerned, construction traffic?
No.
Or is your all's concerned, the visitor traffic?
The concern...
Right.
Is your future concept...
Mm-hmm.
Has a distillery.
Right.
And that, that in and with itself will have a large amount of truck traffic.
Right.
So just want to address, at this point in time, that that will not be coming from this entrance onto this 30-something acre.
I think we are saying the same thing.
Yeah, I think...
Say it then, just say it.
And I think, I think we are saying...
Commit to it.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I think we're fine with that, that we can look at the corporate drive access for the truck traffic, because like you said, there's another, or through Wilderness Trail, like we have written on the map.
Well, that would be between...
And that's, you know, that's going to be obviously cooperation between the two entities.
Correct. Yeah, I thought that you, you had mentioned that that was the plan.
Right.
Was to come through there, the, the... All we're asking is that you...
I think it's, I think we can, that's, yeah, we can commit to that.
Where the first of the three rickhouses is, is the entrance from your property, right? So that would take care of it, wouldn't it? I mean, but it'd still be coming from Lebanon Road, though.
Can you all commit to what we've just discussed as part of the approval of the zone plan? That's the question.
Yes, because you're speaking to the stillhouse property.
Yes. We absolutely, yes, we absolutely can.
Can we add that as part of the motion, Bruce?
Sure. Absolutely, but let me, if you don't mind, simply because...
Yes, sir.
We've got to put this in writing, because I understand the three conditions that, that the applicant has agreed to. Those are that any entrance to the property off Lebanon Road will be subject to, conditioned upon, directed by KDOT.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That, that truck traffic, excluding construction truck traffic, that truck traffic will be through the, all truck traffic will be through either the Wilderness Trail Distillery, or from, or from the existing industrial park. That, when, that, pardon, okay, and that if and when phase two is constructed, the, the truck traffic will be through the, some sort of connector between the existing industrial park and this property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that what you understand them to be?
Yes.
Okay. Sure, they can be, if the applicant agrees, then certainly.
Fantastic.
Record the applicant does agree?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to get that motion now restated completely?
Well...
I think that's how I said it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think if Mr. Baird and Mr. DiMartino say, we'll, we'll adopt counsel's suggestions about the findings, and, and what I just enunciated about conditions by reference, then we can get that.
Thank you. Do you agree with that, Jeff?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Vince, do you agree to that?
Yes.
Just a second.
Exactly.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion to approve with regard to those recommendations or conditions? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Do we need to take a break before we continue? Okay, we're going to take a break for about 10 minutes, restrooms or whatever, and then we will continue with the meeting. You're all welcome to stay. Next item on the agenda is the Budget Committee report regarding the Bluegrass Ad contract under new business. Anything on that, Terry?
Just other than the fact that we did meet with the audit report and we started some preliminary discussions about the 2017, 2018 budget issue.
Okay.
The Bluegrass Ad contract, though, is different, so it's in your packet. We met Terry on that, on back, two Budget Committee meetings ago. You guys, in the past, we've had a contract with the Bluegrass Ad fiscal year 16 where we did the initial GIS map, and they updated our zoning layer for us. They have submitted a technical TA agreement there that's in your packet, where we'd enter into a contract with them not to exceed $5,000. And that would be to take that map to the next level, that I pointed out earlier. Right now, that map is not searchable very well. We need to get that zoning layer as a color zoning layer, a better search function, and really take our online map, again, to a functional level for the public. So, I've talked to the Bluegrass Ad, they said, you know, doesn't mean we're going to spend $5,000, this would be kind of a drawdown approach, that the first thing we tell them is, hey, we need to take that aerial map and make it a color zoning map so you visually can see zoning. We need to be able to move around the map so folks can look up their zoning better, and we need to change the search function of the address layer. And then we're going to put the PVA parcels on the zoning map through an agreement with the PVA. So, that's a big deal, and the Bluegrass Ad is going to be our conduit to do that. So, you have an agreement if you see fit to let us enter into it not to exceed $5,000. We haven't amended the budget yet, we didn't talk about the server, but our carryover is substantially higher than what was budgeted, so we've got money to reprogram. The Budget Committee is going to reprogram several things, so we're going to have the money, that's not an issue. For example, we have a $5,000 line item in the budget right now for vehicle maintenance that we'll never probably need or use into the future, and that's probably the same $5,000 we're just going to reprogram for this GIS map, which I think is a bigger service we're after. So, that's in your packet, and if you guys are okay with us getting into that with the Bluegrass Ad not to exceed $5,000, we would need to approve that agreement to allow me to enter into that with the Bluegrass Ad GIS department.
I'll make a motion that we approve Steve to spend up to $5,000 with Bluegrass Area Development District to make improvements to the map.
Terry moves that we approve. Susie seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. Item two, Personnel Committee report, I'm not sure we have anything, so we'll move on. Legal report?
There's no legal report this month, due to time constraint.
October zoning permits?
In your packet for reference. Planning Commission website, no action item there. It's on the screen, I was going to debut it, walk you through it, I think we've been here a long time. The last aspect I had to get done, obviously, was getting my photo credits on there, right on the homepage, if you guys can get on the website, we've got our boards, live agendas, meetings, boards, audit, financials, staff, all our ordinances are now on there, zoning ordinance, comp plan. Again, I'd be glad to walk you through each page, but I don't think we want to probably stick around that long, and, but I send an email to you guys with our new website, we have our own domain name. The site was built in-house by the staff, we designed the logo, we did the site, took a couple of pictures, borrowed some others. It's boyleplanning.org. Again, every document is on that site, every form, application, fee, zoning ordinance subregs, comp plan, future land use maps, online GIS maps on there, too, but the problem is, as I mentioned, it's not very good today, and this mouse is horrible to try to do this with, but right there it is. So, there it is. So, when you click the map, did a aerial in the back, or, so when you go to the map, this is our map. You literally have to know an address to put it in, if it's a zero address out in the county, good luck finding it. If you get the street, road way wrong, probably not going to find it. And if you did put 101 Main Street, or our address, 445 West Main, it's only going to take you to that one parcel and put a zoning tag on there with no legend, so you would have to assume the user knows what AR1 is or HC is, and then you can't even move around the map and see what the neighboring zoning is. You have to put paper maps on the floor like I did, take a picture of them, and shoot them to a client. So, this map's going to go to the next level under that $5,000 contract. It's going to become a color zoning map that I think will be way more user-friendly for the public. So, again, I won't get into the website unless, I just wanted to show it to you guys, it's live, it's out there, and hope you guys think it's representative of us, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Item six, zoning ordinance amendment.
Yeah, let's talk about that real quick, and then we've got to talk about that zone change case at the very end, Chairman, about this special call, so let's not forget that. I mentioned to you guys last month about amending the zoning ordinance and the subregs. And as I mentioned, the zoning ordinance is going to be a slow process as we roll this out. So, what I did was, as I drafted a new Article One, next month I'll bring you Article Two and Three. We're not going to discuss those today, you can take them home and read them, they didn't go out in the packet. But the zoning ordinance, as we move forward with amendments to the zoning ordinance, some needed ones, it's going to be in this format where it's underlined, strike through. One is a simple chapter, there's some new stuff in there, and there's most of the same stuff, just reorganized, different font, different numbering, but the city has indicated as we amend the zoning ordinance, they want to see the whole thing at one time. They don't want to adopt article after article, they want you guys to review it, and sometime in the spring, summer, whenever, we would bring, you all would approve the whole zoning ordinance revision, and then we'd send it to the governments. Now, the subdivision regs are also in your packet, and that's the next item, those you guys are the final authority on. We adopt subdivision regs, not the governments. And the subdivision regs are almost 30 years old, they're very dated, they don't address the construction issues we talked about last month, we talked about Hunt Farm and other things. What you got in your hand right now is the first three articles, and those are going to look familiar, because in my 20-year history, I've pulled and plugged and chugged from the best ones in the state, that's a hybrid of several places, including Lexington, BG Owensboro, Paducah, over the years, that's how we got the document better and better and better. Article Three is groundbreaking stuff for Boile County. It's how we approve plats, which is kind of how we do it now, but then it's how we move into construction, how we handle our bonds, how we do our reductions, how we do field inspections, how we make sure we build streets timely and according to the design guidelines. So, one through three can be adopted by this board if you all see fit at any time and go straight into the subregs, but Articles Four, Five, Six, Seven, and Eight, it's going to take some time, some meetings with some public works guys, that's when we start doing some heavy lifting on the construction. But Article Three is just process from filing the plat, approving the plat, taking construction plans, and turning someone loose to start building a subdivision street, and then how we end up completing that in a timely fashion. So, that's good stuff in Three, so you guys can read it, we can talk about it later. We either have the option to adopt that piecemeal, or we can wait till the whole thing's done and adopt it, or form a small committee and look at it that way internal. So, that's just more for your information, I had some free time this month and dug into those, and I'll bring you the next few Articles of Zone Ordinance, we'll just read them, and maybe we'll talk about them, or maybe Light Agenda will pencil them in to drill down with you all's notes in a future meeting. But those are just the first few drafts of both documents, comp plans and other issues for some other day. So, that's all I have there, Chairman. And last thing, special call meeting request. I sent a brief email out, you all just had a lengthy zone change request, it was requested at the Planning Commission to have a complete record ready to go to the city for Monday night. I think they're ready to move on this thing, they want you guys to come together sometime before Monday at 5:30 and get your minutes approved, so we can get the recommendation formally to the city with the approved minutes. I know it's maybe not something you do on a normal basis, but that's what they've asked. Bruce and I have talked about it, I sent just a general email. Again, whether you all went up or down, this is how these work, you all send recommendations to the city on zone changes, and then they do what they do, whether it's up or down. And they intend to have that first reading Monday night at 5:30, and I'll have to give a short little, here's what the Planning Commission did, I have to write a recommendation letter, but they want the minutes approved, because your draft minutes don't constitute official minutes. They're not official till you vote on them the next month. So, they would like you guys to have a special call meeting between now and Monday and get those minutes approved.
So, what happens if we don't do that?
Bruce, I was, I was asking, City Attorney, Mayor, City Manager, and they said, it's interesting, Chairman, that different governments are different, some recommendations, maybe they're not so big on the minutes, the city, I think in a normal sense, we would approve our minutes before they would have a first reading. Now, we would do that probably in that month, but they're not going to have a first reading of a zone change unless they feel they have the entire record in front of them, which includes our minutes. And draft form is, according to their attorney, they need them approved.
I understand that.
What I guess would happen is they, they would either have to make a decision to have that first reading without our minutes or not.
Can we do that by email?
No.
We need to do, how much notice do we have to give the public on that?
It's Chair make a call, the majority of the group, we could set a special call meeting, we have to notify the media within 24-hour notice. If you guys set a date right now, we'd be falling in line with the special call meeting notice.
So, can't do it any sooner than 24 hours from now?
No, and Friday would be tough, and, yeah, couldn't work tomorrow, Monday, and she's got to prepare them, I was going to say, we actually got to type them, you got...
We've got to give her a few minutes.
She's got to type them.
Especially if it is a meeting.
No, that's exactly right, so I appreciate that.
You can strike me from Knoxville.
I think you're looking at Monday.
I couldn't see any sooner, I didn't want to say anything. Y'all said Friday, we were going to go cry a little later, but, I don't know, it's your all's call.
Do it early in the day.
Bruce, you want to chime in there? I don't know what else to say, that's all I was asking.
I don't know about you, but I'm retired.
I thought I was retired, but it didn't work out that way.
How early could it be on Monday? How early could it be?
I'm good with whatever, we just need a...
We decide that. Susie said 7:30.
Oh, yeah. I'll bring the doughnuts.
Can you read minds, Jeff?
The other thing, too, we just need a quorum. Right. We just need five members there to officially approve it. Bruce, anything to jump in there? I don't know, so, I was just saying.
I don't think there's anything, if there's anything legal about this, you just got to decide are you going to have a special meeting or not. I don't, Steve, did you mention that this thing is on a fast track and that, we've been told that if we don't do this, you know, get these, this recommendation to the city for their 5:30 meeting Monday, that the whole deal will go down, so.
I don't want to, you know, again, I think we all indicated with the annexation and the timing and the way we got the concept plan and things coming in, this has been a fast track on a tight timeline. I don't want to speak for EDP, so Jeffrey starts yelling at me. Hey, man, I've worked for the Planning Commission, and I work for you guys, I think we can do this.
And I've had no, I have had no contact, all of my contacts through Steve, and that's what I picked up.
They're on a fast track, and it wouldn't surprise me if the site plan's rolling in here in the next day or two. I mean, they are vindicated, this is a time-sensitive approval, and it's got to get through City Commission, two readings, and be published in the paper before it's official, so the city's got some work to do on it, too.
Well, let's say Monday morning.
Anyway. I've got to say this, I struggle with being coerced into working on somebody else's timeline because we totally volunteer to do this at our own time and expense, and it just bothers me a little bit that no one has come to me as Chair from the mayor's office or whatever and said, Jerry, we would appreciate or like for, they may have talked to Stephen, they hadn't said anything to me or any of us to my knowledge, that they would like for us to do this, and I just think that would be at least an appropriate, because I just, I don't know, I just feel this, I feel almost like we're being held hostage in a sense, either get this done or we're out of here, and that, I don't know, that just doesn't, that leaves it not the best taste in my mouth personally, and I just need to share that.
Chairman, I appreciate that, and Bruce and I talked a little bit, and he sees some case law, as long as they've got findings of fact and the motion, that they've got a complete record, the minutes are really kind of an additional document, and they're summary minutes, but we also understand that the findings don't also lay out who came to the podium and spoke and names, and, so the minutes are important, and their opinion, and their attorney's opinion, they're part of the record so they can hear a first reading.
Chairman, the minutes summarize the meeting, and we're supposed to have a summary of the meeting as part of the findings, and generally, we simply refer to the minutes by reference, or incorporate them by reference in the findings. I suppose the fine legal point is, they're really not the minutes until you say they're the minutes, until you approve the minutes. So...
And normally, we would do that at the January meeting, is my point.
Normally, yeah, you would do that at the, normally, we would do the findings and the minutes at the January meeting, but we did do the findings tonight.
If five of us can get together on Monday morning, why don't we just do it, and then we don't have to think about it?
I can make Monday morning.
In the spirit of Christmas.
I can make Monday morning.
I can make Monday morning.
I can do Monday morning.
I could be here at 10 o'clock Monday morning.
I bring the doughnuts.
We could just...
Do we have a motion?
For what?
To have a special call meeting Monday morning at 10 o'clock to approve minutes.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
If it's going to last five minutes, I can be here 10, because I'm going to be somewhere else an hour away.
That's all it'll be.
Can we do it earlier?
You want to do 9:30?
Anytime you want, that would help me.
9:30 would help me a little.
All right.
Okay.
Make a motion, Susie make a motion.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we meet Monday morning at 9:30 for the purpose of approving today's minutes.
A special call meeting.
A special call meeting.
Okay, got that, Jenny? Do we have a second?
Second.
Jeff, second. Most have been made and second that we have a special call meeting Monday morning, 9:30 a.m. to approve the minutes of today's meeting. Questions, discussion on the motion? Hearing not all in favor? Vote unanimous. Will we have a quorum as next question?
I will not be here.
I can be here.
Who can be here? One, two, three?
You got it.
Yeah, we'll have a quorum.
We get the minutes out ahead of time, so all we have to do is get them out by the end of the day Friday.
Email it out, even if you do it Friday last thing.
End of the day Friday, so we can look at it, so the meeting is short.
Another item that we've not done is paying bills, that's not on the agenda, but I assume we want to pay them.
We talked about...
Did we?
Well, we're attaching the bills, and, just real quick, again, I know you guys didn't hurt, so the finance statement in your packet shows expenditures of over $14,000 for the month of October. The list we put in there to pay bills, that that's just the checks that were written in October. That doesn't gel with what we spent in October, because in October, we actually do a lot of electronic transfers for state retirement, insurance, FICA, so the actual expenditure for October is $14,000 and some change that's in your finance report. We're attaching the list of bills that are actually handwritten checks, but that's not actually the full list of expenditures. So, back in the day, I think we paid the bills based off a checklist, but truthfully, we spent $14,000 in October, which is the true amount of bills, and you're not getting those itemized because some of those are electronic transfers. So, and also, when we adopt the budget, I feel if the budget categories have been set, we have the authority to kind of work in those, because, for example, we're paying the bills, but the payroll's already happened, half of those things are, so however you all want to handle it, and in the future, maybe that list should be the whole list, and we approve that, and that's in your finance report, but it's not itemized.
So, you said when we prove the financial report, we're approving the...
Well, we don't pass that, we just discuss it, and then this list is in there as an item, so you guys can clearly see what checks were written for the month after the fact, but they're already been written, and then I think that historically, it's pay the bills, but the budget authorizes us to spend the money, and then you guys after the fact are approving us to pay the bills. We've already written the checks, mailed them off, spent the money. So, however you guys want to do it, it may be something the Budget Committee want to drill down, and let's come up with a process, I would like to see that become an itemized list of October expenditures, which, that's $6,000 short if you look at those.
First legally, what do we need to be doing with that in terms of...
I think you can, I don't, there's no statutory requirements, I think you, however you want to do it, say so, because it would be part of the bylaw.
Well, I mean, I just feel like we're more comfortable if we have in the minutes where we have approved expenditures, period, as opposed to it not being, I mean, being spent but never being approved in a sense.
And I agree, and I agree, but if that's the case, that's not the right list.
I hope that we have a whole list of expenditures then, not just, yeah, for the month, not just the ones that are paper bills.
Yeah, I agree, that's the checks, and if, again, if you look at your finance report for the October expense month, it's $14,000, something, 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 that's what we spent in October, and that's insurance, CERS, a lot of those things get done electronically, and we don't write checks for them. That would be a detailed expense list for a month that you guys could each month prove. I think that makes sense.
And we can just tie it back into their finance.
Is that a work issue in terms of putting it together or not?
Can I just print a check register?